The room got really quiet. Great. Well, welcome to the Federal Way City Council The room got really quiet. Great. Well, welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting Meeting for July 3rd of 2018. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? for July 3rd of 2018. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. So, one of the first things we're All right. Well, thank you all for being here. So, one of the first things we're going to do, we're going to have a brief reception following a very special item that going to do, we're going to have a brief reception following a very special item that we have this evening, and that's to honor our friend Shelley Pauls. we have this evening, and that's to honor our friend Shelley Pauls. And Shelley, actually, why don't you stay there for now, and then I'm going to come And Shelley, actually, why don't you stay there for now, and then I'm going to come up to the podium in just a moment. And this is to give Shelley the well-deserved honor up to the, then I'll come up to the podium in just a moment. And this is to give Shelley the well-deserved honor of the key to the city of Federal Way. What would Federal Way of the key to the city of Federal Way. What would Federal Way look like if it not were look like if it not were for Shelley Pauls? Selfless and dedicated, not seeking any honor for Shelley Pauls? Selfless and dedicated, not seeking any honor or praise, it is precisely or praise, it is precisely such a person who deserves such praise. She is a doer, not such a person who deserves such praise. She is a doer, not a talker. Though through, a talker. Though through, quote, "We love our city," Shelley, along with her husband "We love our city," Shelley, along with her husband Dwight, is always ready, not only Dwight, is always ready, not only to volunteer, but to lead volunteer efforts for the betterment to volunteer, but to lead volunteer efforts for the betterment of our community. Most of our community. Most recently Shelley coordinated the June 9th city beautification project recently Shelley coordinated the June 9th city beautification project through which through which over 50 volunteers spent a rainy Saturday painting over 1,400 feet of over 50 volunteers spent a rainy Saturday painting over 1,400 feet of fence and picking fence and picking up litter along southwest 320th between 11th and 18th. And in fact, up litter along southwest 320th between 11th and 18th. And in fact, you've got the, you've got the, that's when we started that morning, and then we've got pictures rotating that's when we started that morning, and then we've got pictures rotating along, and along, and it's just absolutely amazing. And there's actually a really good picture it's just absolutely amazing. And there's actually a really good picture of Dwight and of Dwight and Councilmember Moore later on, much later on in the day toward the end, as Councilmember Moore later on, much later on in the day toward the end, as Dwight's Dwight's feverishly trying to get this paint on before it rains, and Martin is kind of feverishly trying to get this paint on before it rains, and Martin is kind of helping out helping out with the machine. But we had well over four dozen, 50 volunteers. There's with the machine. But we had well over four dozen, 50 volunteers. There's no way anybody no way anybody else in town could get 50 volunteers to do this. It's just amazing. else in town could get 50 volunteers to do this. It's just amazing. I knew then we needed I knew then we needed to give Shelley the key to the city. And it is, you know, I just to give Shelley the key to the city. And it is, you know, I just drove it today, you drove it today, you guys. I just drove that distance. I wanted to go take one more look guys. I just drove that distance. I wanted to go take one more look at it before today, at it before today, and I just, just took my breath away just how beautiful it looks, and I just took my breath away just how beautiful it looks, especially in comparison especially in comparison to what it looked like before. She's already added again, spearheading to what it looked like before. She's already added again, spearheading another beautification another beautification project on July 14th and August 11th to restore the Hailbus Blueberry project on July 14th and August 11th to restore the Hailbus Blueberry Farm Park, where the Farm Park, where the community event, whatever the community event, food drive, diaper drive, community event, whatever the community event, food drive, diaper drive, you name it, Shelley you name it, Shelley will be at the forefront, along with all of her friends. She has her will be at the forefront, along with all of her friends. She has her finger on the finger on the pulse of our great city. She is everyone's friend and a miracle worker pulse of our great city. She is everyone's friend and a miracle worker at motivating at motivating people to volunteer. I am pleased and honored to present the key to the city people to volunteer. I am pleased and honored to present the key to the city of Federal of Federal Way to our friend, Federal Way's friend, Shelley Pauls. Way to our friend, Federal Way's friend, Shelley Pauls. Let me, you know, I forgot to read the key, the plaque, the key to the city plaque. It Let me, you know, I forgot to read the key, the plaque, the key to the city plaque. It says, "City of Federal Way, Key to the City, Federal Way, Washington, presented July 3, says, "City of Federal Way, Key to the City, Federal Way, Washington, presented July 3, 2018 to Community Leader and Activist Shelley Pauls by Mayor Jim Farrell. Your tireless 2018 to Community Leader and Activist Shelley Pauls by Mayor Jim Farrell. Your tireless service to this community and ability to bring people together have helped transform service to this community and ability to bring people together have helped transform Federal Way, one project at a time. You are an example of true citizen activism and leadership, Federal Way, one project at a time. You are an example of true citizen activism and leadership, and we thank you for all you continue to do for our city." and we thank you for all you continue to do for our city."
Thank you so much, everyone. I really know that I wouldn't be here if it wasn't Thank you so much, everyone. I really know that I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for all of you who keep showing up, so I appreciate that so much. Dwight and I started for all of you who keep showing up, so I appreciate that so much. Dwight and I started doing some community serve work several years ago, and as we began to meet people and hear doing some community serve work several years ago, and as we began to meet people and hear the stories, we just knew that there was such heart and such genuine spirit in Federal the stories, we just knew that there was such heart and such genuine spirit in Federal Way, and we are just proud and pleased and happy to partner and just cheer you on. I Way, and we are just proud and pleased and happy to partner and just cheer you on. I feel like I'm just Federal Way's cheerleader, and that's just because there's so many wonderful feel like I'm just Federal Way's cheerleader, and that's just because there's so many wonderful people who are just giving and doing so much just to make this an awesome place. I did people who are just giving and doing so much just to make this an awesome place. I did not really know what key to the city meant, so I did a little research, and the two words not really know what key to the city meant, so I did a little research, and the two words that really popped up were trust and friends. And I just thought, those are the two words that really popped up were trust and friends. And I just thought, those are the two words that I just, I hope when you think of this night and this occasion with me, that you that I just, I hope when you think of this night and this occasion with me, that you will have a trusted friend in myself and all those who represent We Love Our City. will have a trusted friend in myself and all those who represent We Love Our City. And we're just really proud to love God and love our neighbors and do what we can just And we're just really proud to love God and love our neighbors and do what we can just to serve the city in every way that we can. So, thanks again for coming, and let's go to serve the city in every way that we can. So, thanks again for coming, and let's go do some more. do some more.
Thank you, Shelley. Shelley, hold on for a second. Shelley, Shelley, hold on. Thank you, Shelley. Shelley, hold on for a second. Shelley, Shelley, hold on. One of, some of our colleagues up there in the council want to say a few things. First, One of, some of our colleagues up there in the council want to say a few things. First, your old, well, I don't want to say old friend, your dear friend, Mark Copeng. your old, well, I don't want to say old friend, your dear friend, Mark Copeng.
Well, Shelley, I think you've been, you've been telling us what to do as long as Well, Shelley, I think you've been, you've been telling us what to do as long as I've I've known you, since seventh grade. I think one of Shelley's gifts is really to see opportunities known you, since seventh grade. I think one of Shelley's gifts is really to see opportunities to serve, and then be able to really just give people an opportunity to do what's in to serve, and then be able to really just give people an opportunity to do what's in their heart to do. And I think that's been one of her secrets. She creates great experiences their heart to do. And I think that's been one of her secrets. She creates great experiences for the people that are doing it, and obviously Dwight, I mean, this is just as much for for the people that are doing it, and obviously Dwight, I mean, this is just as much for you. I think you're just an absolute great, I tell you, I just, I just thinking back you. I think you're just an absolute great, I tell you, I just, I just thinking back to seeing your dad here, just remembering your mom, and just the service that's like, to seeing your dad here, just remembering your mom, and just the service that's like, was such a great example, and you've continued her legacy, and it just means a lot. But was such a great example, and you've continued her legacy, and it just means a lot. But anyway, thank you for all you do for our city, Shelley. anyway, thank you for all you do for our city, Shelley.
Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Assefa Dawson. Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Shelley, you're just an amazing inspirational woman, Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Shelley, you're just an amazing inspirational woman, and what you've done in this, in this community is you've made a huge, huge ripple of effect. and what you've done in this, in this community is you've made a huge, huge ripple of effect. And you certainly have made a huge impact in my life, and there's just a lot I look And you certainly have made a huge impact in my life, and there's just a lot I look up to you. You know, you're a person of faith, you're a visionary person, you make things up to you. You know, you're a person of faith, you're a visionary person, you make things happen, you follow through on things, and just the type of individual you are. You're happen, you follow through on things, and just the type of individual you are. You're a giver. You're always constantly putting others before yourself. I have volunteered a giver. You're always constantly putting others before yourself. I have volunteered alongside with you when you retired, and you still put on a smile on that face, you alongside with you when you retired, and you still put on a smile on that face, you know, and so I just appreciate everything about you, and I'm just so blessed that I'm know, and so I just appreciate everything about you, and I'm just so blessed that I'm in your life and you're in part of my life. So, thank you. in your life and you're in part of my life. So, thank you.
That's sweet. That's sweet.
Oh, and Dwight, you're an amazing man for all that you do to support and be there Oh, and Dwight, you're an amazing man for all that you do to support and be there for Shelley. And as a person who's newly married, you know, there's a lot I look up for Shelley. And as a person who's newly married, you know, there's a lot I look up to you as well, in terms of what it's, what it's like to be a good husband and to be to you as well, in terms of what it's, what it's like to be a good husband and to be a good male role model in the community. So, thank you for all that you do, Dwight. a good male role model in the community. So, thank you for all that you do, Dwight.
You're a big piece of this, Dwight. Thank you so much. Councilmember Assefa Dawson. You're a big piece of this, Dwight. Thank you so much. Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Yeah, I'm not going to say anything new. They said it all, but I personally also Yeah, I'm not going to say anything new. They said it all, but I personally also want want to thank you, not only for what you do for Federal Way, but personally, you have to thank you, not only for what you do for Federal Way, but personally, you have touched touched me and you've impacted me. Thank you, Dwight. I know I've found a friend, a friend me and you've impacted me. Thank you, Dwight. I know I've found a friend, a friend for for life, and, sorry. And it's, I think we met through what you're doing for our city, life, and, sorry. And it's, I think we met through what you're doing for our city, for for our community, so I'm sure I may not be the only one who's been impacted personally, our community, so I'm sure I may not be the only one who's been impacted personally, but thank you for being there for me in every way. Thank you, Dwight. but thank you for being there for me in every way. Thank you, Dwight.
So, we're going to have a brief reception for about 15 minutes, and we've got cake So, we're going to have a brief reception for about 15 minutes, and we've got cake and refreshments in the back, so please help yourself. We'll be in recess for that purpose. and refreshments in the back, so please help yourself. We'll be in recess for that purpose.
Okay, we need to call the meeting back to order. Okay, let's call the meeting back to order. Thank you very much, and again, Shelley, congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. And thank you, everybody who could come in here and share it with us. John, before we get to your presentation, I do want to say, as part of the mayors emerging issues and report, as many of you heard in the local paper, I had a proposal that I was going to send to the council about renaming, a proposal to rename 320th Street Veterans Way. Now, one of the things that, you know, I had said when we gave the honorary title to 320th and significant portions four years ago, and over the course of the years, I was, I thought, I kept referencing that we were going to come back to that on the 100th anniversary of the ending of World War I, which really started Veterans Day. But I think, you know, I learned something, I learned at least one thing every day, and sometimes lessons are, some lessons are learned harder than others. But I want to say to my policy partners on the council that I got out there without really, without first vetting it thoroughly before the council and really giving them the kind of input and process that is truly deserved of policy partners. And to the extent that we got feedback, you know, I did my absolute level best to respond. But I think sometimes the message goes out, and sometimes what people hear is the city, or thinking that perhaps the council is doing this. And there are certain, you know, while we all love our country dearly, and we're about to celebrate tomorrow the 242nd anniversary of the Declaration of Independence tomorrow, there are other factors and considerations. And that's something the council, something I was thinking about, but sometimes I think I get a little excited about the process, and we did up a sign, and so I think one of the things I'm trying to say in a very roundabout way, but let me just say, I'm sorry. So that wasn't so hard, was it? But, you know.
You were almost choking on those words, though.
Exactly, that's right.
We would like to thank you very much for that statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, so you can darn well bet when something big comes up next, I'll talk to you guys first. Okay.
Or small.
Exactly, or small, or pretty much everything. Okay, so you guys, with that being said, the 25th anniversary of the annual Red, White, and Blues Festival is tomorrow, and with that, we've got John Hutton, and John, take it from there.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, and Council. Tomorrow is indeed a huge day for your Parks Department. We start off first thing in the morning with Miles Vermiso at 9:00 a.m. was the start time. That is a great event. Several years now, we've turned over over $100,000 to that charity, so that starts our day. And then, of course, the topic of the evening is Red, White, and Blues Festival 25th Annual. That's pretty impressive to get there, quarter century of red, white, and blues events. That is a terrific event. We have averaged about between 20 and 23,000. We anticipate this year will be even higher numbers for two reasons. We always hit the highest attendance when it falls on a Wednesday, because people, it messes up the weekends for people to get away, so they tend to stay, which is fantastic, and they're happy they did. So, and then the other thing is, of course, our Special Olympics in town. We know that a lot of those athletes are staying here in town, and we expect to see them and their families and supporters, so this could be a record-breaking year as far as attendance. As promised, the mayor asked me for great weather, and we are delivering again, so you're welcome, sir.
Great job.
Thank you. So it is going to be a fantastic event. Remember, this event is free. I would encourage you to find alternative parking if you can, because the parking lots do fill up. It's first come, first served on the parking, and the parking lots open at 3:00. A couple reminders, no pets, please, and no open fires at all, no fire at all in the park. There's great food options, terrific music, including this year, we are bringing in the Air National Guard Band. That is a 40-plus-piece band, they may have as many as 50 members tomorrow. So squeezing 50 musicians onto our stage is going to be a challenge in itself, a little game of Tetris with large instruments, that'll be a lot of fun. We have a Neil Diamond Tribute Band called Cherry Cherry, they are fantastic. We have the Kids Parade, then we have the Aphrodiziacs, which gets people up moving. That's a great band, they have played here before, and they're really loved. And then, of course, our favorite Spike in the Impaler is our headliner. They are absolutely terrific. There's a rumor floating around that the Air Force National Band may provide horn sections for some of, or all of these bands, so they've been working together. We have our professional emcee back in, he's very famous, he's been on TV on every continent. His name is Alex Zerby, and he is terrific, everybody loves him. We have all the returning attractions, including face painting, interactive arts by our Arts Commission. They do a great job, that's a tough job, when you're doing art projects with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids. That's really fun, we have the tattoos, the temporary tattoos. So it is just a terrific event, we are looking very forward to it. In anticipation of very warm weather tomorrow, we have brought out a misting station, so people can get cooled off quickly. We want to make sure everybody hydrates, and bring your sunscreen, please, it's going to be a warm one tomorrow. And we're looking very forward to it, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions? All right, see you there.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we've got Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter to talk to us about fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, people of Federal Way. It is my pleasure to be the spokesperson on this important topic here tonight. This is a reminder, because I'm sure that everybody is well aware of the things that I'm about to talk about. Personal use of fireworks. First of all, there are several reasons why you shouldn't engage in the practice, even though it's a famous American tradition. First of all, injuries, I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute, as well as fires. But also, there is the noise problem, and we get constant complaints about that. If you own a pet, then you know exactly what I'm talking about, just from an animal perspective. And remember that pets in the homes are not the only animals that live in Federal Way. There's certainly a great deal of wildlife, too, all of whom who are adversely affected by the noise of fireworks during this season. And then, of course, air pollution and debris. There's four good, solid reasons why we don't want you to engage in personal use of fireworks. Here's, now back to injuries. As you can see here, the simplest firework, a sparkler, which goes into the hands of any six-year-old, burns at 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit. And sparklers can be the most common reason for fireworks injuries during this time of the year. And according to that source down there on the bottom of the page, which I just blasted past, on the average, 280 people a day go to the hospital for fireworks-related injuries during the months surrounding the Fourth of July. 280 people a day go to the emergency room. That's not all of the injuries, those are just the ones that go to the hospital. One-third of those injuries deal with eyes and face, and another third are the fingers and hands, and then the other third is the rest of the body. Now, people have been blowing off fingers and losing eyesight over fireworks for generations, but it doesn't seem to be enough deterrent. So I'll get into another thing that we hope is a deterrent. Now on to fires. You can see, five years ago, I don't have the statistics for last year, but last year, we did have at least a couple of fires started by fireworks in the city of Federal Way. Collectively, in the United States, 15,600 fires in the year 2013 were attributed to fireworks. And on the Fourth of July, nearly half of all fires in the country are because of fireworks, 47%. In 1990, the city of Federal Way Incorporated, in the month of February, the first legalization of fireworks by the Federal Way City Council was, what date would you guess? Hey, that is a good guess, that's a fair guess, but it was even earlier than that. You can see that this was a very aggressive topic for the very first Federal Way City Council. They got right on this topic, for the reasons we've just been talking about, reasons that have not changed. And this has been illegal in Federal Way since this date. Now, the ordinance has undergone amendments and changes and so forth, but it's still in effect. In fact, here is the current city ordinance. And if you look at some areas that I bolded, it says, "It is unlawful for any person to possess, use, sell, discharge, or explode fireworks of any kind in the city of Federal Way", for the reasons articulated already. That's the current ordinance there. Here's an easier way of remembering it. All personal use of fireworks are illegal within the Federal Way city limits. We hope that you will join John and his crew at Celebration Park at 10:00 p.m. on the Fourth of July, and join in community fireworks celebration, which have a much lower rate of injury and fires. Certainly, there's plenty of noise, but off we go with the rest of this here. Now, as I said, this is a strongly-held American tradition, and there is a great deal of expectation on the police department that we will alone change this tradition. And as you can see, that in the past 22 years of Federal Way having a police department, alone, we have not been able to change this deeply-held American tradition. In order to change it, it will take everyone. And I will give you an example. You see that the school district here, for many years, has not allowed any fireworks on any of their properties. You can see it on all of their billboards, on all of their schools. What we would like to see is not only them join in this community problem, but we see other cities legalizing fireworks as well in their towns. We would like to see groups like homeowners' associations and multifamily housing properties join in this ban as well, and impose penalties for violations on their properties, so that it isn't just the police department trying to enforce this tradition. You can imagine the impact it could be had if everybody took a slice of the pie, like the school district is seeking to do. Now, the number-one goal of the police department regarding fireworks, as it is with all other laws and ordinances, is voluntary compliance. It's a well-kept secret, but I'll share it. I'm sorry, Mayor, that we're letting it out of the bag. We would love to work ourselves out of a job. Wouldn't it be nice if everybody voluntarily complied with laws, ordinances, and social procedures? But they don't. Nevertheless, that still is our number-one objective. And so, to that end, voluntary compliance, we are engaged in these efforts every single year. Our friends at the Federal Way Mirror published an article last week that I hope everybody reads. It gives a lot of detail in there. They do that for us every year, as part of education, seeking voluntary compliance. We've posted it everywhere that we have access to, hoping that everybody will be reminded and voluntarily choose to join in this public safety initiative. And where there are people who won't, And where there are people who won't voluntarily comply, sure enough, it is our obligation to be the heavy hand of the law and enact enforcement, and we do. So all this week, there are extra patrols out right now, tonight, on overtime, looking for violators. And we tell everybody, because we want people to comply. We don't want to find people with fireworks. When we do, we will issue a $300 ticket and take all of the fireworks. That makes the police the bad guys again, doesn't it? Taking fireworks from children, that's right, but we'd rather take their fireworks than have fireworks take their eyesight. So when you have a fireworks complaint, this is the number we hope you will call. And beyond that, as we go into next season and the season after that, we hope that more and more segments of the society join in to this initiative to change the American tradition away from one of fires and injuries and noise and pollution to one where we can get together and practice safely, like at Celebration Park tomorrow at 10:00 p.m. Do you have any questions?
Deputy Mayor Honda and Councilmember DuKlo.
Thank you. I'd like to tell you all a story about what happened about three years ago on July 5th at 4:00 in the morning at my house. Fireworks woke us up. We, our house is on the BBA trail. They were very loud. I went out and looked. I didn't see or smell any smoke. Went back to bed, and five minutes later, my neighbor was on the phone yelling, "Fire, fire, fire." And thank God, he looked after I looked, because there is a fire behind our house, and behind our houses, and it did start with fireworks. And it was, it's the second time in eight years that that's happened to us. It's scary. It's terrifying. I have never been as scared as I was when the first time that a fire happened. It was 11:00 on a Sunday night. I was home alone. Young man knocked on my door and yelled, "There's a fire behind my house." We had just heard an explosion about 10 minutes earlier. I opened my sliding glass door to a wall of fire, and I was terrified. And the first thing I thought of was I had to get out with my dogs. Please, please, please. We could have all been sleeping at 4:00, and our houses would have burned down, and we would have been perhaps hurt or killed. So please don't use fireworks. It's just not worth it.
Yes, Rudi Klop.
I don't have anything quite that dramatic, but two years ago, I was home with my dog and my partner, and fireworks started at 10:00 that night. And I mean real fireworks. They weren't the little sparklers or anything. These things were bombs. And they went solid from 10 until midnight. And finally, we were able to go up to the upstairs and to our bedrooms, and at 1:00 a.m. in the morning, they started again. And I knew, I didn't call the police, because I knew people would say, "Oh, you're a council member. You get special attention." I also knew the police were probably out on so many other calls that I would just be added to the list. So last year, I left. I wouldn't stay here. I wouldn't put my dog through that noise for two hours. He hid under the bed and howled. Animals can't stand it. And a lot of people put their dogs or their animals outside in the yard, and that's the worst thing to do, because they get so scared, they'll find a way out. They'll go under the fence, over the fence, or whatever. So if you have animals, please keep them in the house with you, and try to keep them calm, because their hearing is a lot better than ours and tremendously sensitive.
All right, Council, anything else? Kyle, great job. Thank you very much. We should take that snippet of the council meeting and play it as a PSA on 21 periodically. Very good. Okay. Now, we had the Special Olympics USA final leg of the torch run through Celebration Park last week. That was great. We had law enforcement officers from around the country. It was truly touching to see. I talked with, they came up in two single-file lines, and along with some of the athletes leading up to the big ceremony this past weekend that I'll talk about in a moment. But they were carrying the torch, and it was the final leg of the torch run, and we had a brief ceremony there where the four baseball, softball fields meet. And there were law enforcement officers there from every corner of the country. It was absolutely great. I talked to officers and detectives from West Virginia, Alaska, New York, Texas, South Carolina. It was, and they were, they were here to celebrate the Special Olympics and the inclusion and the courage, and just everything that just makes the Special Olympics really, truly great. And I was proud to join, we had, I think we had five members of the city council at the grand opening ceremonies, and I won't go too far into it, I'll let the council talk about their experiences, but it was a tremendous opening ceremonies at Husky Stadium. And Eunice Schreiber's son, Tim Schreiber, Eunice was the sister of President Kennedy, and famously started the Special Olympics movement, and her son was now, is now the Chair of the USA organization. And it's just, just a tremendous honor. And we've got games going on in Federal Way today and all this week. So be looking in the paper and be looking around for events. We had softball games going on today at the ball field. So it was absolutely fantastic. Now, we'll move on to council committee reports. Why don't we start with our Finance Committee Chair, Councilmember DuKlo.
We're solvent. So far, so far. I didn't know that we were going to really have a report. I think what we're looking at, we're having a special committee meeting next Monday to try and look at some other ways of bringing revenue into the city. We don't really have a spending problem, in my mind. We have cut as much as we can. What we have is a revenue shortage, and we need to figure out ways that we can have other types of businesses or whatever. So we're just going to start our meeting next Monday at 5:00, and it's just going to be feel, just freewheeling, and I want people just to throw out the craziest ideas that they can come up with. And I don't want, I don't want to turn anything down. We're not going to be coming back here saying, "Okay, we want to do this." We want to get, we want to get a feel from people of what they think would go here. We don't want to tax you. We want to find out ways we can bring revenue into the city without doing taxes. I know Sound Transit is doing an illegal tax, in my mind, already on us, and other people are taxing us, and I don't think we want to do taxes, but we have to have some money if you want us to keep the services that you need or ask for in this community. So, yeah, I see the signs vote no on pot shops, but I want to be, I want to get everything out there and then try to condense it down. So I don't want to, I don't, we're not taking any votes right now. We're just getting ideas and looking at the situation. We're not going to be deciding anything in the next week or the next month. It'll probably be a couple of months or more before we come up with some recommendations. But I wanted you to know, that's what we're trying to do, is look at how we can generate more revenue into the city.
All right. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I am the Chair of the Lodging, Tax, and Advisory. Back in February, I asked for my colleagues to call me the Mr. LTAC Man, so here I am, giving a presentation of the latest meeting. So recently, my committee is in charge of tourism for our community, which is an important aspect of our city government. And so with that being said, summertime is one of the busiest times for tourism. I'm excited to know that Federal Way certainly is on the map for places to be visited from outside tourists, such as we had 162 members of the delegation from Egypt, and those were just some of the people that came to the underwater robotics competition. So we had 17 countries and 2,400 people come in and compete. And one of the delegates mentioned that he felt, he was really impressed with our police department and really felt that he was really safe in our community. I think that's something that I wanted to share with the public, that, you know, outside perspective of our community from the public safety perspective. Also, recently, we've had the Korean-American National Sports Festival kickoff reception for, that's going to be happening in June 2019, and we expect to see several people within our community. And of course, as the mayor stated, Special Olympics is in full swing. Federal Way hotels, shops, businesses are all impacted by tourism and tourists, and that obviously helps our economy, and it's a great thing. Also, in our LTAC committee, we're talking about what do we do to create and spur energy during the off-seasons. The off-seasons are generally speaking October to about January or so, from what I'm still learning. So there's a lot of things we're discussing, where, and I'm excited to kind of get my sleeves rolled up and get to work on providing opportunities for families here and outsiders to promote Federal Way. So, thank you.
Great. Councilor Copeng.
As Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee, I have the honor of serving with Councilmembers Tran and Johnson. We had really a number of different things we discussed last night. Among them, we finalized the repaving presentation that will be coming before the council. I think Federal Way has taken pride in our roads, and rightfully so. We have some of the best roads in South Key County, if not the best, but that does come at a cost, and I think it's very important for the full council and community to understand that cost. We also talked about something very glamorous, and that was storage, self-storage design standards. I think that it's, while it's a mundane subject, I think it's very important that we have standards that will help us as a community to maintain a level of appearance that's beneficial to the areas that those self-storage units are going to continue to be a part of. I think what we found during this moratorium was that there is a legitimate demand for self-storage units in Federal Way. So making sure that they look as appealing as possible, I think, is certainly part of the equation, something we'll be discussing further at the next council meeting. So that's it for me.
Councilor Tran, do you have anything to report in regard to committee action? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I proudly serve as Parks, Rec., Human Services, Public Safety Chair alongside Councilmember Moore and Copeng. First of all, I want to definitely just thank John Hutton for his work with the festival tomorrow. I think they're working tirelessly for that event, so, yes. I also want to thank Deputy Director Steve Eichardt. So our last meeting, which was June 12th, we talked about the Panther Lake construction, and I think he was a key piece in leadership for that. So thank you, Steve, for that. Our last meeting, we talked about homelessness, and so this is a key issue in our community. It's also priority goal three for us as a council that we established in our retreat. And so we had an update from the Homelessness Task Force, which includes Yarden and Sherri Edwards. So thank you for sharing that information. We also established that they're going to be giving us monthly updates as a committee from now until the report is completed in December. So I want to thank my committee members and Deputy Mayor Honda for helping push that. Councilmember Copeng and Councilmember Moore were also instrumental in pushing that we get all documents and minutes published on our city website. So I think that's an important piece of being transparent to our public, and so that's going to happen going forward. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for agreeing for that. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, July 12th, I believe, and so we're going to talk about homelessness again. We're also going to discuss potential sprinkler ordinance for commercial businesses. So we'll have a discussion on that. So I welcome all community members to come and take part in that conversation. It should be a good conversation, so thank you.
Very good. Okay. A lot of work to be done, and a lot of work being done. This is a new section that we've added, just to let everybody know. So instead of having the, all of the council members at the very end of the meeting, oftentimes when people have left, we wanted to make sure that the committee chairs are able to talk about the important, heavy lifting in business that's being done in the committee level. So I'd like to thank the Deputy Mayor and the committee chairs that are, led that effort to make sure that we get more information out to the people, because a lot of important work gets done in those committees, and then it gets forwarded to the full council and can set agendas. And so this, I think this will help out with transparency as well. Okay, now for the most important part of the evening. We've got citizen comment. I've got a few of these, and if anybody else would like to comment, please submit a pink sheet. So here's, here's the lineup so far. Catherine Crawford, Chris Levitt, Winston Bell, Monica Duran, Sarah Carberry. That's what, and we've got a bunch more, but I'll just call those out. So in that order. Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, neighbors, and friends. I love where I live. I moved here in 2013, excited about the fact that I was within walking distance to a grocery store and a bookstore and two movie theaters, and I was thrilled. I love spending my money here and supporting local businesses. I love paying my taxes here. However, maybe tonight, maybe another day, depending on my schedule, I'll be getting in my car and driving to Fife and paying money. I'll be going into a cannabis retailer. I'll be carted at the door. I'm 58 years old, and I look it. I will be doing my purchasing. Everything is away from my touch, and when I get my product, I'll be carted again. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, and then I will leave, and my money will stay in Fife. My taxes will stay in Fife. Now, I'm not advocating for willy-nilly, irresponsible putting it anywhere. Of course, we want to do it response, we would want to place cannabis retailers away from schools, and we will want to put in protections in place, just like we do with alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and vaping. Now, it's not a big, huge inconvenience for me to go to Auburn, or Fife, or Kent, or Des Moines, or anywhere else where cannabis retailers are allowed. And these businesses are very well-run. They're clean, and I have never felt skeeby or like I was in a bad place. So with that being said, I thank you for your attention today, and I want to spend my money in Federal Way. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Chris Levitt, and then Winston Bell.
Boy, I'm ready for the Fourth and the big celebration. That's exciting. Thank you all for presenting that for us. That gives us a real community, a feeling of community, which I think is very, very important here. Well, greetings to Mayor Pharoah, Deputy Mayor Honda, council members, members of the community, and my lovely wife. I've been a business owner in Federal Way for about 40 years, and we are blessed to have the traditions in Federal Way of caring about each other, listening to each other, and helping each other. Our city government reflects these traditions, and I am comforted to have these advocates who sincerely work, thank you so much, to do the best that is for all of us. I have found our elected city representatives to be very good listeners. This is why I'm surprised that revisiting pot sales is on the agenda tonight. Last than three years ago, our voters said no way with their 61.4 percent vote against pot sales in our city limits. They had watched the results of pot sales in surrounding jurisdictions and want no part of those problems here. This recent mandate from our neighbors cannot be more clear. Thanks for listening.
Winston Bell, speaking on behalf of five individuals, so he has five minutes.
Got adjusted a little bit. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pharoah, Deputy Honda, and the city council. This is my first time speaking to the council, so please bear with me. My name is Winston Bell. I'm a family therapist in Pierce and King County, so I've contracted with the school districts, DSHS, and Federal Way, as well as other counties. So I'm here to speak about the need for programs in our community, as well as some ideas about things that we would want to do. I'm a part of the Federal Way Youth Action Team, which was formed about in 2016 in response to violence in the community. Most of the, maybe half of- Most of the, maybe half of the murders that we saw here in Federal Way were predicated by young, young people. And from what I know, we're the fastest-growing number of referrals to juvenile justice in King County, and it's kind of odd seeing that, the size of our county, of our city, I'm sorry. We were, we were not targeted, but we were asked to be a part of the Federal Way Youth Action Team by the King County. And King County saw that there was a significant amount of young people being referred to juvenile justice centers. So, they came to our community and said, "We need help from our community leaders." I started an organization, a group called the Game of Life Sports Mentoring, and we have about, currently, we have about 30 to 40 young people. Every Monday and Thursday nights, we feed them. It's a sports mentorship, so we play basketball, and that's only to catch for AIDS. So, from building their confidence in sports, as a therapist, they come to me with their needs. Winston, I'm homeless. Winston, I haven't eaten today. Winston, I live at home with mom, I haven't graduated, so therefore, I don't have resources to get jobs. So, while we bring them in to help feed them, we also connect them to the trades. We have about 10 young Hispanic brothers that were first introduced to the trades, and now they're a part of the unions. We've sent several young men to work for the railroads, BNSF, and it's because it's a flailing industry, and a lot of the elders, statesmen are retiring. So, we had some connections with the trades and the railroads, and we decided to shovel our young guys in that direction. King County has helped to support us over the last couple of years. One of our main partners has been MSC, the Multi-Service Center, of which I know Councilwoman Deanie was a part of for many years. I sat on a board with her back in the day. I won't tell you how many years, but, and what we're asking is that because King County has seen that we've been doing tremendous work, they've adopted our programs, they've helped fund us, we're asking that you find it in your heart and in your budget to help continue the funding that we've been given by King County. I see, I've had, several of my folks are here, the organizations of Phenomenal She, which I'll talk about a little bit, and Game of Life, and they're here to support us. And we know that our community is behind us. We know that the county is behind us because they're putting dollars behind us in order to help put a brake in that, what's called the school-to-prison pipeline. I know several of you are aware of the school-to-prison pipeline. So, what King County's doing is saying, "We realize that there's such thing as the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline, and we want to enlist the help of the power brokers in the community to help stop it." So, out of that came Game of Life, a gateway program that helps young people ages 18 to 25 to find resources for several of those things that they're doing. So, Phenomenal She is another brand-new nonprofit organization. They just donated 600 books to Enterprise Elementary a week before their closing, and you should have seen the tears of the teachers who wanted to send young people home with books but didn't have the resources. Last but not least, we want to ask you about the use of the old Target Building, because we have found that we have tremendous athletes in the Federal Way area, and the Amateur Athletic Union is really progressing in other cities and bringing tourism to those cities, and we're hoping that we can do the same thing here, if we're allowed to use that Target Building. Thank you all for listening. I appreciate you being as open and honest as you have been. This is, again, my first time speaking, but I've had dealings with a lot of the council, as well as I've watched the mayor for many years, and especially this last year, at the Spray Park right here in Federal Way. So, thank you again for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And that doesn't mean that I run through the Spray Park all the time. All right, I do, but don't tell anybody. All right. Monica Duran. And then Sarah Carberry and Jack Walsh.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and local citizens. I come today to actually complain about how our city manages our code enforcement complaints. I am a homeowner of two properties here in Federal Way. I've been a homeowner for 10 years. I have eight children in my household, or 10 in our household. We moved from Compton, California in search of a better life for my children. I didn't want them to grow up in the same neighborhood as what I did, and Federal Way, we found it ideal. I currently have issues with a neighbor. She's been calling Code Enforcement, the Humane Society, the Police Department, the Mayor's Office, and I've reached out for help numerous times and attempted to make contact with these agencies. Recently, Code Enforcement sent me a letter of violations that were corrected in the property. I even had one of the Code Enforcement officers walk the property. They said we were in compliance. That was late May. By early June, another Code Enforcement officer went to my property and fined me over $1,000 worth of fines, and I didn't, I do not know, I do not know what the violations are or the knowledge. I have recently spoke to Brian Davis, my husband and I. He said that since we violated the law, that we needed to pay. I'm not sure what law we violated. I've never received a letter of the violation, and I tried speaking to Code Enforcement officers personally, and they ended up escorting me out of the office. I went in search, they told me to go to your office. Unfortunately, you weren't available. I have tried numerous times to reach out to the community. I feel like, I don't feel I am getting harassed at this point, because Code Enforcement officers, as well as local PD officers, are telling me that she's calling the Mayor's Office, and the resolution that you guys came up is having local police go through my CODISAC three times a day, and my children are scared. They can't even play outside the CODISAC because she's contacting local police. I mean, I don't know how to go about this, but it's getting to the point where I'm about, if I'm the one getting targeted, I'm about to get in contact with, you know, my local Hispanic community, see if anybody else is going through it, and local media. I have reached out numerous times, and I'm not getting any answers to my questions. And unfortunately, I have these sanctions, and I do not know why she's violating me or they're violating me, and my children are getting afraid that PD is going through my house three times, three times a day. And I have asked PD numerous times, this woman will put candies in the mailbox for my children, see, after I asked her to stop to put, putting letters in my mailbox, and PD has tried intermediate, but I think in both ends, all ends, we're all tired of her complaining. But I felt, I feel disappointed that the resolution is for, you know, local police department to drive by my house three times a day to see if we're parked one more inch from the curb, if my children are playing outside, and it's getting out ahead, so.
Thank you, Miss Duran.
Thank you very much.
It sounds like you've got a meeting scheduled, or our city attorney is going to be meeting with you or talking with you early next week. Sarah Carberry. And then Jack Walsh.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and Council. I have just a few things I wanted to bring to attention. The first one is actually tomorrow at the Red, White, and Blue Festival, make sure to stop by the Billy McHale's booth and show some support for Do the Right Thing. They're going to be having cold-brewed coffee, as well as lemonade, and portions of those benefits will go to support Do the Right Thing, which a lot of you know in the community has done the diaper drives, as well as a new program that helps children that are in the, sorry, I'm blanking, the Running Start Program, thank you, to fulfill some of the other needed obligations they have for Running Start. And that's a partnership between Cafe de Arte, Billy McHale's, and Do the Right Thing. The second thing that I wanted to mention just to the public is that there is a roundtable that's going to be held on Tuesday, July 17th, at 4:00 PM. It's a taxpayer, community members, as well as entrepreneur roundtable at Woodmont Library. Roger Flagar is organizing that, and just a time for us all to come together, come up with ideas for the community, do some brainstorming. I know also this has been done by other people in the community. Martin Moore has done a number of them. I know Rugged Genius Media, Lamont Stiles, as well as Jesse Johnson, has organized a number of those events as well. I want to thank people that have came to those events. I'd love to see more faces. I haven't been able to make all of them, but as much as we can get to those events, I think that it is important for our community. One thing I also want to touch on is the youth involvement. I've heard a lot of, I've talked to plenty of people in the community, the community and nationwide. I have a lot of entrepreneur friends that are really interested in Federal Way as well, and there's been a lot of, for me personally, I've worked very closely with the wholesome hip-hop movement, a lot of the Christian-based hip-hop. We just did a concert called Illuminate Federal Way at Christ Church a couple of weeks ago, was a great event. It gives a spotlight for local entrepreneurs and artists. I know Cheyenne Sala and Brave New World Entertainment have done a lot in the community to bring entrepreneurs here that are in the entertainment industry. I know they're doing monthly meetings for, it's called the Artist Workshop, so that's something that other local people that are in the industry can look into. But I just want to say that everyone that I've seen is doing great things. I think there needs to be just a little more collectivity of everyone coming together instead of groups doing their own things, but I think we're headed on a really good And that's pretty much all I wanted to speak out about, just I think that it is important to delegate more resources to those youth programs. I have an 11 and a 14-year-old, and personally, as a mom, I'm scared for my kids, because I know that the street life is a very tempting lifestyle, especially in this area for a lot of the children, and I want to give them alternatives to that lifestyle.
Thank you, Sarah. Jack Walsh, then Linda Kochmar, Jim Stiles, Dennis Stiles.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, and our neighbors here in Federal Way, I'm Jack Walsh. I've been a resident of the community for 34 years, I believe now, and had a small business here for seven years, a family-oriented business. Before I address the main thing I want to address, I first want to thank the mayor and the council for honoring Shelley Pauls. She is well-deserving of that honor. There is, I am totally continually amazed by her. So, just what, three years ago, 62% of the community voted against having retail pot shops here in Federal Way. I mean, that was, I don't think that the, anybody anticipated that strong a vote against it, but the community very clearly voiced opposition to retail pot shops here, and I think with very good reason. One is that, you know, no offense to the lady who goes down to Fife to get her cannabis, but this sets a precedent for the young people. And, you know, marijuana, you know, you can argue about the, how harmful it is, but it is certainly a gateway drug. Week before last, I had a nephew who overdosed and died on something much, much stronger than marijuana, obviously. Nobody's going to die from marijuana. However, his first introduction to drugs was with marijuana, and it led on to other things. It definitely impacts, especially the brains of young people, and setting it, having it here in Federal Way sets a precedent. It basically gives a green light for young people to think that it is okay, and it is not okay. It is a moral issue, as I see it. Also, as a business owner here with a small business, a family-oriented business, my business and many other family-oriented businesses would be devastated if a pot shop opened up next door to us, or even halfway down the block. It would be devastating to our business. The small amount of revenue, you know, you're thinking that, well, hey, we got to capture that tax base. You know, as from the report here, it looks like Auburn, a city of similar size, received $182,000 last year in revenue from marijuana tax. You know, that is, as I see it, probably enough to hire two police officers. And with additional problems brought by this, we would need two additional police officers at least, and so we're treading water, if we're just looking at it from a revenue issue. If you're just looking at a moral issue from a revenue side of things, there's no reason to look. Just a final comment, I'm from, originally from the state of Nevada. In Nevada, they allow things much more harmful than marijuana, and they justify it by the tax revenue that it would produce. There's no reason for us to prostitute ourselves as a city by trying to seek a little bit of track tax revenue from something that is harmful to our residents. Thank you.
Linda Kochmar, then Jim Stiles.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, and thank you for your hard work. You're all doing, I see you getting your legs. By that, I mean, I see you beginning to be what I hoped you would be, and you are doing that. And Councilmember Duklo, thank you for being in the Federak, talking about the, throwing everything at the tax problem, the revenue problem. Just throw everything at the board, crazy as it is. Good, good for you. So, as a former council member for 14 years, as a former mayor, as a former deputy mayor, as a former state representative for four years, and I'm tired of the former, I want to go on to the new, but what I want to tell you is, being as former council member and former mayor, and bringing up this issue at the state level. So, the state legalized marijuana, and there are many reasons for that, one of which is that many of us didn't want to see our children being arrested for smoking pot. However, it's still illegal federally, and so that causes a problem with the banks, because they cannot deposit in a federally FDIC bank. And so, when they close the shop at 2:00 in the morning, or whenever they close, there's the opportunity in the parking lot for a problem with robbery. And so, and the thing is that the sales tax is so high on the pot shops, that what you've got going on is people in the parking lot dealing with the black market, because they're not paying sales tax before they even get in the shop. Now, that isn't going on everywhere, it is going on some places. But I think for me, over, I had, I asked two experts before I came here, what do you think about that? I asked my grandsons. So, hey, millennials. And McHale said, "Hey, look, this is probably going to be the way it is in the future. It's probably going to be legal." And you know, it probably is, but there's a lot of issues to be worked out in the meantime, and I worry, as I have about my grandchildren and my children, about quality of life in Federal Way. For me, I'm very concerned about our families. I'm very concerned about our younger children, thinking that this is the thing to do. So, anyway, thank you for letting me give you my two cents. What I really wanted to hear was the presentation. I was hoping that you'd hold the comment back until after the presentations were presented. But there's one thing that we did talk about in the state legislature was, that the cities were not going to get their full share of the sales tax revenue. They were going to hold it back, and I don't know how long they were going to hold it back, because I've been gone for a couple of years. But I'm not sure whether maybe you want to wait to see what happens with all that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Jim Stiles, and then Dennis Lamont Stiles. And then Jonte Ossler, Lynn Idehosa, Dominique Duncan, Betty Taylor, Gregory Brusso.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, council members, Federal Way people, even though you probably had something better to do this evening than to be here, I appreciate the fact that you did show up. Thank you on a day before a holiday. Thank you for being here. I definitely had better things to do, no offense to the, to the business of the city of Federal Way, but this is a holiday for some of us. of Federal Way, but this is a holiday for, for some of us, and I wanted to take advantage of that. But I thought it was important enough, when I heard about some discussions that were, were being had, that I wanted to get my two cents in there. Seems like we've visited the problem before, and speakers before me have talked about the 62%, and I remember when, when the, when the initiative or when the advisory vote was, was coming up in 2015, and people were talking about the fact that the city, that King County had voted in favor of the initiative, was it 502, to legalize marijuana, they just legalized for, use of marijuana for adults, not teenagers, not folks that, that we necessarily see using it in public, which are also not supposed to do. But we talked about what kind of a city that, that we, we felt we wanted to have in the future, and, and people like Councilman Moore and others talked about the vision that they had, as a family-oriented community, and was this going to help increase or help, help reinforce that, that family attitude? And many of us decided in that election to advise you, to advise the council at that time in the mayor's office, that we didn't think, among other things, that that was a good idea. It's also been brought up about the, the amount of revenue that would be brought in versus increased, potential increased costs. I agree completely with that, that this is not a panacea. When you're looking for different revenue sources, be careful what you wish for, you just might get them. And they may not work out exactly the way you think. The other thing we talked about is that it's still illegal against federal law, and that puts a lot of people in a bad situation. You cannot use the, the normal methods of depositing funds and holding funds and, and utilizing funds from federally chartered, FDIC and other federally chartered financial institutions. So what we have right now is kind of a, we've got some credit unions that believe that they have the, the abilities, because they're not under that charter, that they can, they can deal with the monies that are coming in, but that's, that's still a question, but it's being done right now. But that money being, being pushed from the retail establishments to the, to the banks or to wherever the money's being held, is definitely, there's the possibility of it, and it's already happened, robberies going on about that money. We also heard about, about drugs being sold in, in and around the establishments outside of the actual retail establishments. So for all those reasons, and for even more, I guess it was time that, just that I, I remind you that we meant it. Thank you.
All right, Dennis Stiles, and then Jontay Osler.
Good evening, everybody. Peace and blessings. Thank you for having me. I never know what I'm going to say when I get up here, because man, it's just so many issues. So I'm going to go fast, because I only got like three minutes, right? So I was going to come up here, I wanted to first give a shout out to all of the community organizations that came out and want to show that you guys are in a budget year, and we looked at like some of the things that you were doing as far as, as the, the issues that are going on, the problems that are going on in our community, and we were like, well, man, we had a youth forum, we've meeting with kids all the time, overwhelmingly, it's hands down, they want programs and something to do after school and on the weekends. So if we're going to invest in something, let's invest in our youth. We have Phenomenal Sheet, we have Center Stage, we have Game of Life, we have all of these different great programs that we're doing, and, and Sarah, you mentioned a couple as well, that we're doing that can help, that can help our community. So as far as like the youth and whatnot, when we talk about crime, when you look at the crime, we're talking about young people, and you're talking about the homeless issue. So there's no way that you're going to tell me that the citizens of Federal Way fell off that, that bad, that we're sleeping in the streets. No, we're not. These people are coming from other places, and they're, and the resources that, from the people that live here are going to get drained. We move their camp from over here, they move over here, we arrest them, they come back, and they still, that, these are not feasible solutions, there's, we're still faced with the problem, and it's going to suck all the resources out. Ms. Ducllo, see, I agree, is one of the tactics that we felt, because I come up from a, I've been probably in court, I've been in score, you see what I'm saying? And they, what we say, they throw charges at us, and then whatever sticks, that's what they're going to charge us with. So yeah, I agree, let's throw some ideas out there and see how we're going to make some money. I didn't really want to talk about marijuana, because that's people's personal business, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't even want to get on that, but just think about it. Every city around us has legalized, or basically has stores. So regardless of what, how you feel about it, people are going to other cities, and they're getting it, and they're coming back here. I'll tell you what, those three apartment buildings that you guys put in here affected us more negatively than marijuana's going to do it. Just think about it. Hey, the, we, kids are not supposed to be drinking beer, they're not supposed to be doing a lot of things, but I think it's more of an issue inside the home of saying, hey, we're not, you're not supposed to do this, you're not supposed to do that, this is a personal issue that people want to do whatever it is. I have a marijuana felony, do you know, from 2002, do you know that you can't get your license, or you can't get your felony expunged until five years after you pay off your fine for something that is legal right now? And King County, they're expunging them. You go to Pierce, they're not expunging it. These are issues that we need to talk about. It's not about you personally, and I don't know if you guys go to, I go to the dispensaries. Listen, man, I have never seen nobody outside selling marijuana, it is, wow, that would defeat the purpose. You can go in there, get your own, you can get whatever you want. Why would I want to go in the parking lot and wish, let's, let's do the statistics. How many people are actually getting robbed? I've seen some stuff on the news, but let's look at the statistics of actually crimes being done at these marijuana pot shops, and let's, let's, let's not just say what we've heard. I heard that California was sending people on one-way bus tickets to come to, to Washington because we got better resources. So I heard a lot of things. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Jontay Osler, and then Lynn Idahoza.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Jontay Osler, I come here with Rugged Genius and also Federal Way Action Committee. My background is I have a degree in film and video production. I've done a lot of work over the years with SYVPI, that's Seattle Youth Violence Prevention Initiative. I currently moved to Federal Way not too long ago, and so I've been looking to do some work with, in the community. I think that we can't, we can't leave, we can't leave the raising of our community up to the police. I think that, I think when we do that, that's when, that's when we have underserved communities and people that slip through the cracks. Me personally, I'm, I'm almost a, I was a product of actually being, being in an underserved community. I came from, I came from base, I came from the streets, and I almost didn't make it. I almost didn't make it. And because of a program that, that was funded with $250,000 per year, it was called the Royal, Raising Our Youth as Leaders, you said, what can you do with $190,000? Well, the program with $250,000 saved my life. If, if it wasn't for that program, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a degree in film and video production. I wouldn't be standing in front of you with the man that's trying to reach out to the community, give back, and pull somebody else up, because, and you have to excuse me, because I speak from the heart, and that's the only way I know how to speak. We, we let the police police us, right? They can't, they can't do that job of raising us, they can't. The relationships, the relationships that come with the work that we do have to be organic. You can't put, you can't put the money and the responsibility of saving the streets all to the police. So my white brother right there, I can't remember your name, so I'll call you my white brother, if that's okay. $190,000 definitely can go a long way, so look out for us.
Thank you. Lynn Idahoza, and then Dominique Duncan.
First, Stephanie told me to address that I'm, I actually am going to speak for five people, so I have my signatures that she said she couldn't.
That's, we'll get them later. Go ahead, Lynn. Thank you so much. Thanks for saying that.
No worries, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, as most of you know, I'm a precinct committee officer in Federal Way. My primary focus is voter education, and that has driven me to realize the most effective way to teach is to do, showing that our local elected officials care about what we want by participating in this process. None of the opinions I share tonight, or any other night I speak in front of you, are reflective of the 30th legislative district, but my own. I have appeared before you many times on behalf of citizens that I speak to and think their concerns are valid, not only to them, but to the community at large. The first issue I want to bring up is a report that Chief Wong referenced during the May committee meeting that Councilman Johnson runs. The report advised that in the last four years, there's only been one incident of police brutality and one incident of racial bias. Neither of them were filed in 2014, which means that report is in error. The Hunter family has spoken in front of you several times, that's the case they're speaking to, so why are none of those numbers included in that report? So I want to go on record saying that that number's inaccurate, and we need to make that accurate, and perhaps that's why it took two months for me to get the background on that report, since I've been requesting it since then. I just received it yesterday. I've been requesting it since the May meeting the next day. And I request that the council look into that further, because I see stuff all the time at the transit center, I see kids getting raped, I can't imagine that no parent is speaking out about this. I can't imagine that no one else in the community has this problem. Another issue that was discussed was homelessness. I urge the council to get more creative. Everything I've seen so far is kind of just wasting resources, moving encampments just moves the problem to a new area. We've watched Seattle make these mistakes. Shouldn't the city of opportunity have more innovative solutions? My last point this evening is youth programs, as many of you guys have discussed, I also want to bring that point up. The influx of families here in the last three years has grown, but our city still appears unprepared for how to service this community. Last month, Councilman Johnson and Rugged Genius Media partnered with several organizations to hold a youth forum. The youth as a collective felt unprepared, especially in regards to life skills. Most school districts across the country also experience this issue, I'm not saying that we are the only ones. But you can also implement community programs, that is something that the city can do. In Seattle, they have late night, they have after-school programs, we don't really have things like that to teach life skills here. Let's give our youth programs that address the areas that the youth are looking for, that they know they're lacking. If kids know they're lacking information, that's really sad, that we're not addressing their requests. These are including budgeting, credit, trade school opportunities, youth employment, and most importantly, access to resources. This is a budget year, and I ask that on top of your normal interaction with the public concerning every member of this council, make it a personal priority to get innovative and work with the community that shows up faithfully to talk to you about our concerns. Let's be that community that works together. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Dominique Duncan and Betty Taylor, and then Gregory Berusso.
All right. Hello, good evening. My name is Dominique Duncan. I'm 18 years old, I was born in Seattle, moved to Federal Way. All right, so let's get this started. All right, I'd like to, I want to talk about a couple of experiences and opportunities I either had, or wish I had, would have had in a high school or my community. So throughout high school, I would have loved to see the city in my neighborhood, you know, I lived on 336, so over there by the Safeway, by the Taco Bell and everything like that, you know. I would have loved to see you guys over there in our communities, like, you know, helping out our kids, you know, making like a presence felt, because I believe if like, there was a presence in our communities, then some of the crime that you would have, you see prevalent today wouldn't have been like a, so, what's the word for it, like, so, prevalent, prevalent, look, yeah, so prevalent nowadays, you know, we need like, we really need role models, I see a couple over here in the, in the stands, you know, in the back, you know. I think we really need like strong leaders, you know, Jesse, you know, Martin Moore. I think like, things like that would be proved to be very fruitful. I would also like to say there's opportunities throughout the schools. For me, I only got lucky and selected to help out with Jesse's campaign on a whim, you know, I barely, like, somebody told me, hey, Dominique, I'm going to get you in touch with somebody at the school, but I feel like other kids like me, that's not going to happen, you know, it's one kid out of like, you know, like 200, you know, like, stuff like that needs to be more like implemented in our schools. I'd also say that, like my sister over here said, she said that we need like more like life skills. I think life skills is a huge thing, like, people tell me like, hey, Dominique, what's the Pythagorean theorem, but nobody asked me, is 700 a good like credit score, you know? I never even knew that you could buy a house until last year. Like, I guess that's like my fault, but whoever's fault, you know, but last year, I found out that you could actually buy a house. You know, like, I didn't, I thought that was like, thanks for rich people, you know, like, I never knew, like, I got it out of, like, a teacher told me, she's like, hey, I just bought a house. I was like, a house? You bought a what? And she, she walked me through the process, and I was like, are you kidding me? We're not going to be taught that things? So I think something like that is important as well, and, and that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Dominique. Thank you, Dominique. Councilmember Moore?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to say a few words. It's a rare occasion. I just want to do a shout out to Dominique. I've known him since he was in seventh grade, he was my avid student, and in avid, if you know what avid's all about, we teach students to step up, be a leader in our communities. And Dominique, what I just saw from you, and what I've been seeing from you, that's leadership, because I know you listen to both sides, I know that you think about both sides, and you're actively trying to be engaged in our community. And so I just want to applaud, applaud you and do a shout out, good work.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Betty Taylor, and then Gregory Berusso, and then we've got Gordon, Gordon Bach, and then Allison Taylor, and then I've got a couple of letters. So, Betty Taylor.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about National Night Out. National Night Out is an event, basically nationwide event, but it's August 7th. Okay. Okay, National Night Out is a yearly event promoting neighborhood awareness and police community partnerships to make our communities safer. National Night Out is designed to increase crime and drug prevention awareness and generate participation in local anti-crime programs, and send a message to criminals that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back against crime. In our city of Federal Way, we had a lot of cities, a lot of neighborhoods participating in Night Out last year. We had a, an event at the Newtown Square Park last year, and that was the first time we've done it at a park. We served over 300 people. We had people coming from all over, because the main goal is to target those neighborhoods that don't have Night Out in their neighborhoods. We got people from apartments around the Town Square Park. Different people from churches came, we had a lot of entertainers came, and it was a big program. We plan to do this, this, the same, the same thing this year, too. We cannot do it without the support of the community. We're glad to be partnering with five different organizations empowering youth and families, tailor-made outreach ministries, Target, Integrity Life. We have four people on our committee, which is myself, Joe Bowman, Susan Honda, Claire Wilson, five people, excuse me, Jeremy Dawson. We work hard and tirelessly to put this event on this year. We're thankful for the city of Federal Way for helping us last year with the waiver to the park. This year, when we submitted help to the city, we got rejected. It's okay, rejection comes, we can deal with rejection, but when it comes to a city event, this is not separate. We are doing something for the community. Last year, we, we helped 300. This year, we're going for a total of 1,000 people, coming to one place, coming together, people of all nationalities, African-American, Ethiopian, Chinese, Japanese. We want to come together, but we need help from the city. We don't need rejection, we need help, we need partnerships. This is a partnership. We are not against each other, we need to be working together and collaborate together to come up with a workable solution that benefits all. And we hope to see everybody at this event, we will be having flyers made, I don't know how to make flyers, I don't have that gift, but I know there's someone in the community to help me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Betty. Gregory Berusso, and then Gordon Bach.
Good evening, excuse me, Mayor Farrell, W, Mayor Honda, and Council, and everyone here. As Chair of the VERSA- As Chair of the Diversity Commission, I'm here to report on the Flavor of Federal Way. Now, this is our multicultural event that we're having August 18th from 11:00 to 5:00. It's in full swing. I want to let you know that we have secured many, many sponsors. We've secured many vendors, whether it be profit, nonprofit, and even a lot of food vendors. We have enlisted local talent, regional talent, talent from within the schools. It's gonna be a great day. I would like everyone to support this for our first annual event that we're having. Last year, we called it the Cultural Fair. This year, we're calling it the Flavor of Federal Way. It is free to everyone, so it's gonna be a great time. I just want to make sure that you all know that a lot of the companies here, the local companies, have supported this event, have sponsored the event. A lot of the restaurants here are putting in a lot of time to come to the event. I'd like to see everyone there. We'll be there tomorrow with a booth with information, flyers. But we also need volunteers still. We're still looking for volunteers. We have a lot of things to accomplish for that day. If anyone puts on an event, it's an all-day thing. We're gonna probably start about 6 o'clock, and I probably won't get out of there till 6 o'clock. So it's, for me, it's logistics is trying to get everyone there, but I'd like to see everybody there if I can. I know that the city supports us. I support the city, the Diversity Commission, along with advancing leadership is putting this on, so we partner with them. This is a great event. This is one that I want to see extend on for more years, like our signature event, the MLK event. We need to go a little further this time. This is celebration of diversity in our city. We talk about this every time, through food, through music, performers, showcasing our city as one of the most diverse cities in this region. And I think we can do that here. Now, there's the taste of Tacoma, there's the bite of Seattle. We all know also, if some folks know, I had some hard time getting vendors, because actually August 18th is Hemp Fest. But that's okay, you know. I got turned down from a lot of folks, but I'm, we're still moving forward. Our committee is working hard, and the commission's working hard to get this event on its feet, and something that's gonna continue on for more years. So I thank you for support, and we're gonna do all we can to get this going.
Great. Thank you. All right. Gordon Bach. Gordon?
I think you have to leave.
Oh, okay. Allison Taylor. There she is.
I have been called, sorry. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, City Council. Apparently, it was said two weeks ago that I seemed mad. I was not mad, I was passionate. I find it interesting that a woman is mad and a man is passionate when we speak intensely. Deanie, I wanted to appeal to you for your revenue suggestion meeting. I think that maybe you could go online with that as well, whether it be have people send suggestions to you, or put a form together on the city website, something like that, because I think that it's a great opportunity for collaboration within the community. I just think that not everyone can make it to a meeting FIPM, so I think that might be great. Thank you. I would also sort of segue that into social media, and I appreciate that some of the council members have been very active on social media, either explaining something, sticking up for what they believe in, and interacting with the community. I think that's the way that the world is sort of going, very interactive, fluid, transparent communication, and I appreciate those of you who have done so. I also appreciate seven out of eight of you that responded to an email that I sent recently. That was, that was nice to get a response. Dominic, I wish he was still here, because it frustrates me that Dominic says we need to see more leaders like Jesse, because I see a leader in Dominic. He's actually going into the military, and I hope that he comes back here and he plants roots here, because Dominic Duncan is going to be an amazing leader in this community. But he knows I feel that way, and I'm sure he will hear it again. Pot shops, the hasty generalizations I heard tonight were sort of frustrating. I spoke to another mayor, I just messaged them, and said, what have pot shops done in your community? And they said, they've seen a little bit of an uptick in medical issues due to weed that tends to be more of a mental thing, don't ask me how I know, than a physical thing. But other than that, they actually haven't had an uptick in crime. They haven't had an uptick in the stuff that Linda Kochmar is talking about, that she doesn't know anything about, like people selling weed in parking lots. It just doesn't, that doesn't happen. You can sit in the parking lot at Greenside and watch what happens for a few hours, and it's very controlled. And so I think that we need to be responsible. We are losing money to our community, to our neighbors, and I think it's not the only source of revenue that we should be looking at, but I think it would be a responsible one. And I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, that I appreciate that you have backed off on the veteran sign situation, be it pressure or personal choice, and I hope that we can maybe redirect your passion towards something that maybe benefits more of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Great comments, Allison. Thank you. Chris Nikosia and Roger Flagler have submitted samples, not samples, but their comments in writing. They just popped out, sorry.
Samples of their writing, right?
Samples of their writing. Man, all right. Take two. We've got letters, exactly. I went down, no, no.
All right.
Please.
All right.
Help me.
The first one. Dear Martin, Maureen Burne, head forwarded your message to me regarding the possibility of the city lifting the ban for pot cannabis stores. I cannot state strong enough what a stupid idea this is. The city did the right thing after legalization, banning these stores in our nice community. That's what we have, a nice community, and let's keep it that way. Seems cities these days don't have any issue with banning whatever, driving with a cellphone, plastic bags, straws, smoking, et cetera, et cetera. But when it comes down to the issue, it's always the same old story. We need the revenue, or simply, oh, pot's not that bad. And pot smoke, well, that's good, nicotine is bad. Is the city looking for a revenue stream? Shouldn't we be taking advantage of what's going on in Seattle and create a Federal Way's Economic Zone? Where the city creates a positive low-tax structure for businesses, taxes will actually flow into the coffers contrary to thought. Doesn't Federal Way have bigger issues to be concerned with? These so-called homeless that stand virtually on every street corner scamming us with their phony wheelchairs and crutches and then stash them at the end of their shift? Why is this not banned? First Amendment rights shouldn't apply. They simply do not belong here, and the good citizens are tired of it. I realize the city and mayor are doing the best they can with keeping this riffraff and the grow operations from settling in, and deeply appreciated, job well done. But lately, we're seeing RVs parked down our way here in Dash Point area. But I do digress. Do the right thing and continue the ban on pot stores within our great city. Thanks for listening. This letter is from Roger Flagler, and it reads, July 3, 2018, Mayor and Council. In case time constraints pull me from City Hall, I would like to thank the mayor for reconsidering and naming a 320th to Veterans' Way. I have submitted letters from Federal Way residents in opposition, and I said I would. I would also like to announce a planned event for Federal Way residents addressing taxes and how we can help find solutions rather than losing our police and other community services. Finally, I have been talking with Federal Way residents about a public market. I recently visited Wenatchee, which has a public market and has added a special place for people to gather with families and friends. It's a place for shopping, dining, and local crafts. 241-713-631, closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas. I'm sorry I had to leave early, but I have pressing issues at my office tonight. Sincerely, Roger Flagler.
Okay. Are there any more samples? Are there any, are there any more yellow sheets? Pink sheets, excuse me. Oh, my God. Okay. I think it's time for a break. Exactly. All right. That concludes the most, thank you very much. That includes the most important part of the meeting, which is public comment or citizen comment. It is really, that was a great example of hearing from the community. And you know what I'd like to really thank? Every one of those comments was civil and to the point, and exactly what we need to hear. So, great job, everybody. Okay, Consent Agenda. These items have gone through a council committee, and they can be passed in one motion. And normally, we have quite a number. We only have three of this agenda. Item A is the minutes for the June 19th, 2018 Regular and Special Meeting. Item B are the monthly financial report from May of 2018. Item C are the vouchers from May of 2018. Council, is there an item that you would want to pull for separate consideration? Okay, not hearing a motion. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
I move approval of items A through C on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right. Now, let's move on to council business. Item A, the Northlake Management District Advisory Committee Appointment. Councilmember Kofang.
I move to appoint Darren Nash as a voting member of the Northlake Management District Advisory Committee with a term to expire March 15, 2020.
Second.
All right. Been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Arts Commission Appointment. Councilmember Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, we will not be taking action because the candidate had a health emergency, so we'll be postponing for a couple of weeks.
Okay. Let's move on to item C, Parks and Recreation Commission Appointment. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Bobby Jennings to fill an alternate member position expiring April 30th of 2019 on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Diversity Commission Appointment. Councilmember Johnson.
I move to appoint Mezu Kirishi as a voting member of the Diversity Commission with the term to expire May 31, 2021.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right. Now, moving on to item E, the proposed repurchase of vacant property adjacent to the Performing Arts and Events Center. It parrot says, "The Hotel Property." First, we'll have a staff report from our city attorney, Ryan Call, and then we'll proceed from there. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. We're here tonight to address the policy question of, and I'm just gonna read it, should the city council authorize the use of city funds not to exceed $2,187,756 plus closing costs to complete the city's exercise of its option to repurchase the 1.86 acre parcel of real property adjacent to the Performing Arts Center from Atone Salinas, Inc. So this piece of property that we're talking about, we've been referring to it as the hotel pad or the hotel property. I have a picture here of it. So the blue is the current Performing Arts Center that is developed. We have a proposed, well, a planned staircase that's actually already been designed, and we're just waiting to rebid it, so we can get a price that we can afford for the staircase. And then we have two undeveloped pieces of property. One is the hotel property, which we do not currently own. It's, we sold it to Atone Salinas Incorporated for the purpose of redeveloping a hotel there. And then we have the TC3 property. So just going back a little bit to talk about the hotel pad, we sold this about a year ago, almost exactly a year ago. We, in order to effect the sale, we actually created a new lot by taking a little bit from the Performing Arts Center lot and a little bit from the Target property lot and making a new lot that was that sort of L-shaped lot that we saw. It was 1.86 acres. As part of that sale, we imposed quite a few restrictions on the property to prevent its development as anything other than a hotel. So there were brand restrictions, style restrictions on the type of hotel that would be built there. But most importantly, there were very specific timelines on when the hotel was to begin construction and when it was to be complete and open. As of now, the developer has not started construction on time. So the developer is currently in breach of the contract as we agreed to a year ago, and the city is in a position, specifically, the city council's in a position now of, we're at a crossroads. We basically, under the contract, have the option to repurchase the property back and put the parties back to where they were before the sale, but this option only lasts for 30 days. So this is kind of the city's one chance to exercise its option and put, basically, take the property back and start over. It's disappointing, obviously, and regrettable that the developer's been unable to start construction on this project. And if it was, if there was some hope that they would actually successfully build a hotel, I think we'd be in a different position now. But the developer's not, as of yet, submitted a building permit, has not ever given us a plan that actually would comply with the local zoning code. So it seems pretty clear that they are not going to be able to build this hotel. And more importantly, through, as we've talked to them more, it's pretty clear that they only had enough money for the property, and they don't have, they need investors for the actual development of the property, and they've been unable to secure those investors. So, Mayor, you're gesturing to me.
That's okay. Go ahead, continue.
So, the option, as I described before, is a 30-day option. So as of June 1st, when they were in breach of the contract, we had 30 days to make notice that we intend to exercise this option. The mayor did send a letter to Atone Salinas based on that breach of contract, that the city did intend to exercise its option. We sent that letter on June 6th. Under the contract, we have 60 days from that notice to effect the sale, to take the property back through an escrow agent. In order to do that, council must authorize this, both the purchase and the appropriation of the funds to make this purchase back. There's a separate resolution that speaks to funding, but I summarize it here in that it's, the original price, they said, was $2.1 million. We do have to pay closing costs, so we were budgeting $2.3 million out of Strategic Opportunity Reserves, $2 million from that fund, and then $3 million from a contingency fund for unanticipated cost reserves. These are, specifically, the Strategic Opportunities Reserve is a fund that's meant to, for the city to have funds to make good on, I guess, business opportunities or rare opportunities that must be acted on quickly and that we don't necessarily want to bond or, and we can get our money back on, is a big part of it. So those are the two sources of funding that the Finance Director has identified and is proposing. So there is a separate resolution on that. If you have questions about that, I think now would probably be a good time to address those, or we can do it at the time of the resolution. I would like to answer all the questions now, before we take the vote, because the two are connected. So, I just want to stress one more time, and maybe I didn't state this already, but the option is only for this 30-day period, and then if the city chooses not to exercise this option, what happens is it terminates. And so at that point, if we ever wanted to try to take that property back, we would have to negotiate a sale, and we wouldn't get it back at the price that we paid. We'd get it at market rate or whatever the rate is that we negotiate.
And this is the, this is the exact price that we paid for?
It is the exact price that we paid. So, the idea is to put the parties back to where they were.
Very good. Councilmember Duclo, do you have a question?
No, he just answered it.
Okay. Wait, I wanted to make sure. Oh, Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, thank you for the presentation. One of the wonderings I have is, to my understanding, if we were to purchase the property, there's restrictions on private businesses that could be there, so we would have to condemn the land. And so that's used for the government purposes. What does that include? Or what could we build there if we were to buy back?
Well, we're not, that's a separate issue. So right now, there is an operating easement that restricts the use of the property to retail purposes. What council decides to do with the property in the future, it's contingent on a lot of things. One is clearing the easement. If we, you spoke of condemnation, that's not an option that we've really explored with the people that we're negotiating with right now to clear the easement with, but if we decided to go that route, we'd need to do public purposes with that property. So basically, parking structures, government buildings, things that have a government purpose. But that's not the only option for the property. We could, I don't know, we'd have to explore it. I think that this would be a good opportunity for the city to go back and kind of reevaluate what we want to do with these two pieces of property.
Councilmember Assefa Dawson?
Sure. Thank you.
Two questions. Can the current owner sell it to somebody else?
Yes, the current owner can, not, well, we have a right of first refusal right now. So no, if we want it, they can't sell to someone else. They have to sell to us right now. If we, if the city chooses not to exercise this option, then yes, they can sell the property to someone else. As I stated before, it's got a lot of recorded restrictions on the property that make it only good for hotel use. So they'd have to find someone else that's willing to build a hotel basically exactly as they proposed it, which is probably a very limited market. So probably wouldn't happen, I guess, is the point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you so much. So just for the sake of repeating yourself, how much are we buying at this time?
You just want me to read that number again? All right, here we go. $2,187,756 plus closing costs.
And that's?
So the closing costs are attorney's fees and escrow agent fees.
And that's when we bought, that's how much we bought the land at?
It is, that's the exact number.
That's what we sold it for?
That's what we sold it for, exactly.
Okay. I'm kind of curious, is there any statistics and maybe you or somebody else knows this answer in terms of what that parcel or that property is valued at right now?
So we did not make another appraisal of the property because it costs money to appraise the property. But we did ask an appraiser if it would be worth our time to appraise the property, make sure it hasn't decreased in value. And Marwan, I don't, if you want to speak to that?
Definitely, the property at the present time has a higher value than what we sold it for. And the reason for that is what's happening within the downtown area. You have sound transit coming in and acquiring many parcel that it's creating a shortage with available parcel for development within that, within the downtown area. But as Ryan have indicated, we have not actually appraised that property. But I do believe that the property value have increased.
And has anybody checked King County Appraiser's website? Or there's been absolutely nothing?
I don't think the King County evaluation have updated the price of that particular property.
So there's, so the property value, we can assume that property values is a lot more in that area because of all the downtown development and opportunities that are coming in?
That's correct, including to sound transit being there.
Okay.
And the potential for the downtown staircase being built.
Absolutely.
Right adjacent to it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ryan, for your information. I do have a couple of questions. So right now, we still owe the money when we built the PAC, right? So if we spent $2.3 million to buy this thing back, do we have to pay back to the fund that we borrowed within three years?
Yes.
And how are we going to do that while we're still paying for the PAC?
So the idea is, we have three years. Either at that time, we could choose to bond it or the plan is, this property has inherent value and we don't plan to keep it. So it's increasing in value every day. So at some point, we're going to sell this property. And then we would refund that money back to the strategic reserve fund that we took it from. So that's, that's one of the reasons that, and maybe the finance director can speak to this directly, but that's one of the reasons we're comfortable proposing that source of funds because it's not permanent. The intent is, at some point, we're not going to keep this property. We'll either sell to someone. If we choose to keep it, you're right, we'll need to find a way to either service the debt or find a way to pay for it. But if we sell it, that's not a problem.
You're in line.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kofang, then Councilmember Moore.
Ryan, thank you for the presentation. I just think, you know, clarity around this issue, I think, needs to be expanded just a little bit. We sold that property with every intention of having a hotel developed there. We sold that in good faith that that was actually going to happen. But we did put some restrictions on that property. Basically say that if it wasn't developed by June 1st, or if it wasn't started by June 1st, that we had the option to buy it back. I think the real challenge, and one of the reasons that, as a council member at that time, I was that interested in having those kinds of restrictions is we didn't want to end up with the same situation that we had with blighted property that has no possibility of development for the foreseeable future for a company that was not able to secure the funding required to complete the job that they had started or proposed to start. So basically, what we're doing by buying this property back at the price we sold it for is creating the possibility of selling it to somebody else and/or relooking at both that property and the TC3 property together and coming up with possibly another solution. I think with, obviously with the Transit Center coming in, with just the, all the activity in federal way that's happening, I think that certainly is possibilities that that is, could look like something different than it is now. But again, I think my concern certainly is we're spending money and it's, we have, we have, we have the money available to do it strategically, but it has, it has an expiration date as far as when it needs to be paid back. But the prospect for me of having basically an undevelopable lot right next to the PAC and right next to any future development and basically kind of maybe even foul up the sale of the TC3 property because nobody knows what's going to happen with that hotel property, that's a concern to me. So that's, I think that's one of the reasons why I look at this and go, this is not an ideal situation, but I think it's better than the alternative.
And Councilmember Kofang, you brought up exactly my point when I pulled up this map. We actually took off a piece of the PAC property so that the hotel, when it was built, would be closer to the PAC. So this is very close to our, you know, state-of-the-art performing arts facility. So having an undeveloped piece of property there for an unknown amount of time is really, it's hard to swallow.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore, then Deputy Mayor Honda, then Councilmember Duclair. All right, Deputy Mayor Honda, then Councilmember Duclair.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have some questions. When we went out to try to find a hotel, this was the only company that responded. And now they're saying that they're unable to secure investors and I'm concerned about that. Is there a reason that they gave that they were unable to secure investors?
They didn't, they implied it very strongly. And they also implied that it was because the existing OEA wasn't cleared and they weren't really working to clear it, the investors were struggling. They just said, call me back when you have this thing ready to go, basically. Investors aren't looking for projects that aren't ready to build. They want something that they can drop their money in immediately and start building. And that was not this project.
Okay. So we're going to use money that we have to pay back in three years. And so in three years, then, if we want to sell it or even sell the Target Property, we're going to have to try to get those restrictions lifted.
That's correct.
And there's a cost to that.
There is.
And it's a very hefty cost at this point.
We don't really know how much it will be. So we've been negotiating those that, since we purchased the TC3 property. And so Councilmember Johnson brought up the prospect of condemnation. That's like, that's kind of the worst-case scenario. If we have to go to court over this, we would. But we're trying to negotiate with them in good faith and find a fair number.
I think it will be in our best interest that we try really, really hard to lift these restrictions so that these, this property can be sold. Because that's why we bought the Target Property in the first place. It wasn't to keep it undeveloped. In three years, we're going to owe a lot of money back to the city, back to ourselves, the PAC, some other loans that we've taken out. And I'm concerned what's going to happen in three years. It's a little frightening to me. The other issue I have is that in checking property taxes, these folks have not paid property taxes since they've owned the property. And I want to make sure that that is covered, that they cover that and that we don't pay the property taxes.
And I know you brought that up previously with me, Deputy Mayor. And I should have got back to you on this issue. But the title report reflects that they have paid taxes on this property. So probably what's happened is the assessor's office hasn't updated the website or something like that. But the title report does reflect that they have paid property tax on this property.
I'm very glad that they have.
Councilmember Duclair?
I just, is there something else that can go on that property besides the hotel? Or is it, is it really just tied to having a hotel there?
Well, currently, we have imposed restrictions on the property.
Yeah.
That says only a hotel.
Can that be changed?
Yes.
Okay, because maybe we need to broaden things and look at what else might be. Let's open it up a little bit more. Might not be a hotel. It might be something else that would be just as advantageous to that area as a hotel. We have the Clarion, which is being totally remodeled. I mean, they've just ripped the whole thing apart and everything, waiting for everything to get in place. So I would suggest that we open this up a lot wider and put it out.
All right, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. So we are about ready to make an investment decision of $2.3 million. But I don't hear any long-term plan for this piece of land. So that's concerning. I mean, we basically gambled $2.3 million, not knowing that in the future, what's going to happen to this piece of land. I'm worried about that.
It's a fair point, Councilmember Ryan, that we don't have a public plan right now for what we want to do with the property. The idea that we're gambling, I think, is a little, is not necessarily accurate. The property has inherent value. We're paying money, we're paying for it what it's worth. So we can sell it again for the same price or better and probably much better given the current market trends. The properties are increasing in value there, so.
But all due respect, you and I are not the expert on that field. So for us to sit here and say, this piece of land is going to increase value in the future, I think that's premature.
Well, no one can say that for sure. But as Mr. Sutherland pointed out, it's pretty incredible that it wouldn't increase in value given that they're going to be, there's going to be a multi-billion dollar infrastructure upgrade two blocks away.
Well, if that is the case, then do you think it would be advisable for us to wait until the recession hit where the property, you know, usually go down in value and then buy it then?
That's a gamble. We'd have to renegotiate the market rate. And probably even with the recession, odds are it'll be worth more than it is now, so.
Because what?
But that's, if we were to wait, so we lose the option to force the sale and we'd have to negotiate a sale just like anyone else.
In that?
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. And that, what you just said, would cost us a lot more?
Odds are, it would cost us significantly more, yes.
Okay, so just.
Councilmember Ryan's point is fair. We don't know where the market's going for sure. But all we can do is make our best guess. And based on the infrastructure that's pouring into that particular part of the city, it seems pretty incredible to me that prices won't go up. But I can't guarantee it.
Right.
Councilmember Kofang?
Just to revisit the previous point, though, that I made. We have a larger piece of property that we also want to sell. And having the uncertainty of a developer that has demonstrated no ability or willingness to negotiate the easement or to actually build or secure investors to build the building means that property could be sitting for years. And that could definitely foul up TC3 as well. I think we want to sell both properties. And I think to retain control of the property or to regain control of the property makes a whole lot more sense than gambling, which I think is gambling, to say that the price is going to go down in three years. I think the likelihood is much higher that it's going to go up. I think that's what we've seen with property, especially with that much infrastructure coming in around it. So I just, I don't, it's just not a comfortable conversation from the standpoint that we're buying something back that we were happy to sell. But the same point, I don't want a donut hole sitting in the middle of our property for the next three to five years and basically constrict our ability to actually sell the larger piece of property and actually create the economic development opportunity that is actually going to increase revenue and create solutions for our city.
Councilmember Moore?
And I think to my colleagues, and Ryan, thank you for your efforts and answering all the tough questions that are coming out to you. But I think, you know, when I made this decision, I forget how many years ago, a couple of years back, you know, for me, this is about controlling our downtown. And just to my new colleagues, it's our, there was a time where our joke was, excuse me, our downtown was a joke. Where was our downtown? Jesse, remember that growing up? The fact that you would hear that. Oh, our downtown's a joke. We have worked incredibly hard to really control our destiny and control what happens in our downtown because we all hear, oh, we want a Kent Center. Oh, we want a thriving place. So the question is, do we want to sit out and not do anything and walk away? Or do we want to continue to control our destiny on our, and we've all been working incredibly hard to build a strong economy for our downtown? And I'm excited that the values of the properties are going up. That means we're doing the right thing. We're investing in ourselves. And so I think, I think, you know, as, sure, you know, I wish we were in a better spot. But the reality is that we've got to continue to control our destiny. And I'd rather buy the property at, right now, versus when it goes back up, so.
The other issue that I think that, I'm not sure the point has been made very clearly. Can you put the properties back up?
Sure.
That diagram? That if we didn't buy the hotel property back and we eventually cleared TC3, we would have to go back, and if we eventually got the hotel property back at a different time, we'd have to go back and either, and either pay for that separately or condemn it separately or whatever. But, but its future would be untethered with the TC3 property. That being said, Councilmember Ryan? Do you have any other?
Yeah. You know, I would feel much more comfortable knowing if there is a long-term plan for this piece of land. For example, let's say we buy this back with a plan to build New City Hall, for example, right? Sell this building now because of the markets is hot. Lease it back with a new ownership. Wait until the recession hit and then build that new City Hall. Does that make sense?
Well, and that would be something that you would do. Let me just, let me just say that that would be a public use that you could do on that property. But you wouldn't be able to do it until the easement was cleared.
I honestly didn't understand all of that. But I'll say, the issue tonight is, we have 30 days to act on this property. And if we don't act on it, we can't get it. So that's the issue before council tonight.
And it splits the properties. Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you.
Before I do that, I'm sorry, I kind of cut the council member off. Councilmember Ryan, were you done? Okay, Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. You know, I understand that we have 30 days to act on this. And I, I think we're in a really tough position. And, but what I would like to see after whatever the vote is tonight is that if we do vote to purchase this property, that we work to get the restrictions lifted. It'll be one piece of property at that point or are we still going to be calling it two pieces of property?
That's something we'd need to determine. We could put them back together. It depends on what we plan to do.
If we put them back together, then we only have to work for lifting the restrictions on one piece of property? Would that be?
I don't know if that really affects the transaction that much. And it does cost money to change lot lines. So we would probably wait until there was a plan.
Okay. And that's my other point. I want a plan. I, I want the, I really want the council to be involved in a vision for this area. And we really haven't been. And I mean, we have a beautiful, we have a chance to make this area downtown, to rebuild it. We have the park now, we have the PAC, and we have the Target site. And I don't know what the vision is. I mean, I saw the plans that were presented a few years ago. But involve the council, let us help with the vision. Involve the public. It's not just our city, it's everybody's city. And if we're going to make this work, it has to be more than just your office doing it. It has to be a lot of people doing it. And I'd like reassurance that we're going to be a part of this. We're going to get a plan. We're going to get an idea of what we can do and what we can't do. We're going to get these covenants. to get these covenants lifted, so that, because the, when we bought the Target property, which I did vote against, it was with the intent to sell it. It was not with the intent that the city keep the property. Well, if we can't sell it because of the restrictions, and we need to be working really, really hard to get those restrictions lifted, so we can sell it. If we're going to keep it and develop it ourselves, then we need a plan, we need a vision, and let's...
And the one, I agree with you wholeheartedly, the one incredibly difficult part is, you've got an individual who is, who owns, who owns that easement, who is keeping this price artificially high, and the City of Federal Way will not be held ransom, and the City of Federal Way is not going to pay three, or four, or five times what it's worth, and we're not, and so, that's where we're at. We've got a private property owner who's essentially holding the city ransom, and that's where we're at. And so, we're going to fix it. But, we, the, one of the, I mean, just to be perfectly candid and frank about it, I wholeheartedly agree. We wanted this hotel property to work. We had a vision, we've talked about this, we've had the council buy into the vision in regard to the buildings, and the University of Washington, Tacoma, and Federal Way, and then the hotel property and leading up into the staircase, but you've got a private property owner who's holding the city ransom. Now, what do you do with that? You know, he's got a private, he's got a private property, right? You know, we may be where Jesse, where Councilmember Johnson eventually ended up, but we'll have to, we'll have to work our way through that. But, that's, that's what's going on here. And, and so, it's important to be candid about it, and that's, but we're not going to pay multiple times what it's worth, and that's, that's the position we're in. And it's unfortunate, but it's reality. So, Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Moore?
Well, I just wanted to comment to Deputy Mayor's feedback, and it's, of course, you know, we want to get the public engaged, and lately, I've been talking about getting the public engaged, and
Right.
We're not doing nearly enough, and I think we can always improve in that area. But, you know, I do want to remind the Deputy Mayor that when Tim Johnson produced the first Economic Development Strategy Plan, that we were involved with that, that we were briefed in that, and that shared exactly what our goals and what we're trying to do, which encompassed the downtown, and encompassed the economy, economic status of our community. So, I just, that was one comment that I wanted to bring to your attention, and, yeah, thank you.
May I respond?
Of course, yes.
I believe that that was supposed to be a preliminary report from the Economic Director, it was his 100-day report or something. But I do feel, at this point, time has passed, and perhaps there's a new vision. We have, the PAC is there, and I believe it's time to look at it again.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Copeng, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate, you know, there are members of the council that were not on the council at the time, and didn't have an opportunity to vote on this. And I know Deputy Mayor, you said that you voted against it, and certainly understand that, but I think revisiting this issue at this point is kind of, is moot, because in actuality, we are where we are right now, and we've got to develop a path forward. So, we can look back, obviously, there was, there was some issues that could have been cleared up at one point, now we have to deal with it. But, I think for us, it's very clear, this current council has an opportunity. We can buy the property back for the amount we purchased it for, and can, and control the destiny of the development of that area, either through reselling that property to another buyer, to make another hotel, or, or to build another hotel, or something else. We have that option. If we don't purchase it, we have an option for TC3, but we do not have any control over the hotel property, and it's going to, it could foul up what we're trying to do in the bigger picture. So, we had a plan, the plan failed. We have to pick up the pieces. That's all there is, to me. It's like, what's the best way to pick up the pieces?
I think, I, thank you, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's fine.
All right. I think it would be beneficial at this time to have, maybe while Ade comes over, Ade, I think you need to give your budget presentation, before we ask the council to vote on this, I think we need your presentation on item F, before we proceed with item G. Would the council agree with that?
I think that would be...
Yeah, or E. So, Ade, why don't you come on over, and, and that way, we can, you can brief, run through your PowerPoint on the financing of this, and...
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I called you your honor. That's an old habit. I don't think there is a PowerPoint presentation on that, but we can talk about the different funds.
Okay. Come on over, Ade. Let's get this done. Councilmember Stefan Dawson, you had a question, I saw your light on.
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, Ade, if you could walk through, assume that we've already pushed past item E, would you give your power, your presentation regarding F?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, council. Pretty much, I think, what I'm speaking to is how to fund these, but before I get to that, I think, in my own opinion, we have this land, the whole idea of acquiring this land is to have control of downtown. I think, as of this point, it is important for us to take that back. Now, if we take it back, the question that I was going to address before is, what is the best way to buy this back? I said to, I think I've talked to some of you, where I use the analysis, your roof is leaking, and you have savings, money that you are saving up for a vacation or whatever. Do you borrow the money to fix your roof and keep your savings, or do you use your savings to fix your roof? The essence of having savings is to be able to deal with an emergency like this. So, I do believe that we have the strategic reserve, which is what, when we set up the reserve fund in 2014, these are part of the things that I anticipated, to be able to have $2 million in that strategic reserve, and $1 million in the other reserve that is intended, in case of budget revenue shortfall, that we will be able to use it for. So, in this time, to be able to control our destiny, you know, I think owning the land back is in order, and funding it with the reserve that we have, you know, I think is also in order. Based on your current policy now, when we use the reserve, we're supposed to replenish it within three years. So, just, I think that's pretty much the essence of my presentation.
Okay. Now, I want to put a pause on that. Ryan, I'd like you to come back. I need, there's a piece of this that, that I think that the public's not going to get, that the council's not going, there's a lot of stuff that's been going on behind the scenes that we've been working incredibly hard for the past year to clear these easements. And, and I made reference to it a moment ago, but, Ryan, the cat's kind of out of the bag here, I need you to explain what we have done in order to essentially work with Mr. Rosen, and that, the owner of the OEA. What have we done to evaluate the value of the OEA, and where have those efforts led us?
Okay. And there's a reason I didn't bring it up. It's a very touchy subject when you're actually
Right.
...negotiations with someone, and so, I understand.
Right.
I'll explain it.
I think it's important, let me just, let me just say.
Yeah.
I think it's, we're talking about the public trust, we're talking about public money, I think it's important to just put our cards on the table
Sure.
And just, you know, and just explain everything that's going on, because I need everybody to understand that's watching this, that's going to read about this, to understand that we have done everything that we can do to try to clear this easement, and we're not going to overpay city money.
Right.
We're not going to pay more than what it's worth, we're not going to be held hostage. And, and so, what we're trying to do is the right thing, and we're, and we are, we're always, and this is public money. And so, I'd like you to explain where we're at
Okay.
On this OEA.
So, almost, within a few months of acquiring the TC3 property, attorneys before me started trying to negotiate with the benefited property to the north, the Hillside Plaza property, who is the beneficiary of the operating easement. We had a difficult time even getting in communication with him. It's, the company is largely a holding company, they're not terribly interested in, in developing property, but they had worked with us in the past to clear, not with us, but with the prior owner of the Toys R Us property, to clear that easement off of that parcel. So, we, when we purchased the TC3 property, there was precedent that they would work with someone and clear the property, they cleared that one for, I believe it was $350,000. So, we kind of had a measure of what we thought it would be worth, and how hard it would be to do it after the sale. Turns out, once the sale was already accomplished, the owner of the Hillside property was going to take a different approach. So, basically, we tried to negotiate just through dialogue for a while, that wasn't really working, so, we decided to appraise the property, we hired a, not the property, appraise the property right, which is the easement, and we hired an outside appraiser to appraise it, and then we sent that appraisal, appraisal over to the benefited property owner's lawyer, and said, "Here's our appraisal of the property, this is kind of what we think it's worth, what do you think we'd like to deal?" They, in turn, commissioned their own appraisal, using an entirely different methodology, not based on prior sales, or some of the other kind of normal elements that you would use to evaluate the value of a piece of property. Instead, they took a, they made up their own thing, basically, they made up a kind of a market, lost market kind of analysis, where because the Target property had not been used as a retail establishment for a certain amount of years, it somehow had impacted them, it was basically a damages claim. It's completely inconsistent with my understanding of what property valuation is, how it's done. We got another appraiser to look at that, and said, he agrees that this is not how things are done. So, we're kind of at an impasse now, where they're at a crazy number, which, you know, is $4 or $5 million, and we're thinking it's worth $300,000 to $600,000 tops. So, on top of all of this, there's a third party, the hotel, who is, you know, kind of left in the wind, they don't know, they try to negotiate directly, and they don't really get anywhere either, but they also don't want to spend any money. So, it's just been, it's basically a position where the benefited property owner doesn't really care, like, he's got all the time in the world, he's not in any hurry, and he's got all the cards. So, he's kind of just sat on this. If we take this property back, and we come up with a public use for these two pieces of property, we can force the sale. The city has the power of condemnation, we are not just some other buyer at that point, we are the government, and we can use our powers of condemnation to force the sale at market rate. So, that's, that's kind of, that's it all laid out. I didn't want to make it that blunt, to be honest, because this is going to be, it kind of sets our hand now, we're kind of down this course now, we're going to have to take a condemnation route with Rosen, because they're not going to deal with us anymore, so...
So, we can envision all we want, but the problem is, is that if we go toward condemnation, it has to be a public use?
Yes.
So, there are certain things that we cannot do, until we figure out exactly what steps we're going to take.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Ade, for the presentation. I do think, just to my colleagues, that this would probably be the most financially sound decision, long-term, to buy it back, so I do agree with a lot of us here. I would ask that, in the upcoming FedRec strategic planning conversations, Councilmember DuKlo, that maybe we can add this to the agenda, as far as long-term visioning for the property. So, that's all the comments there.
Okay. And I would, I would only say that I would, I would, I would suggest that, let's figure out what our legal strategy is first, and then, once we figure that out, then we go, we figure that out, and, exactly. Councilmember Copeng?
I think, discussing legal strategy at this point, there are two paths. We can buy this property back, try to negotiate, sell it to somebody, have them negotiate, or we can, we can just buy it back, then condemn it. When we get to public use, though, there's a requirement for public use, and that, we would be owning that property at that point.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a period of time that we would be required to own that property?
It's, we have to have a good faith base, we have to honestly plan and, and work towards using it for government purpose. So, honestly, at this point, these are the kind of questions that, that we need to answer in closed session.
Yeah.
So, if that's where we're headed, I don't want to talk about this anymore in public.
Right. I think we've, we've walked right up to that, that precipice, but I, but I think the public deserve to hear what we've done, and where we're at, and the, and the actual considerations that have been going on. So, okay. All right. With that in mind, Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion with regard to E?
Yes. I move to authorize the use of city funds not to exceed $2,187,756, plus closing costs to complete the city's purchase of the 1.86 acre parcel of real property adjacent to the Performing Arts and Events Center, parcel number 0921004-9331, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents to accomplish said purchase. Second?
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter of course unanimously. Item F, resolution authorizing the use of strategic opportunity reserve funds in contingency for unanticipated cost funds to fund the repurchase of parcel number 0291049331 and closing costs. Deputy Mayor Honda?
She doesn't need to read anything?
No.
Okay. Authorizing, resolution, authorizing the use of strategic opportunity reserve funds in contingency for unanticipated cost funds to fund the repurchase of parcel number 092104-9331 and closing costs. Second?
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. A good discussion. Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Ade. All right. Council discussion on potentially allowing the citing of marijuana retailers in the city. First, we'll have a staff report from Assistant City Attorney Eric Rhodes, then we'll open it up for discussion. All right, please. Eric?
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and council members, good evening. I will present tonight some information about the Washington State Marijuana Excise Tax distributions, and about federal ways prohibition on marijuana businesses. This chart on this slide shows tax revenue and distributions to cities and counties. For the current fiscal year, the state legislature has appropriated $15 million to be distributed to cities and counties. That, and, and this chart also shows that the revenue that the state has collected has increased each year since marijuana sales began, and there's also a pattern of the amount that is appropriated to distribute to cities and counties has increased. The original legislation included a formula where that allocation, appropriation to distribute to the cities followed a pattern of being capped at $6 million for two years, then $15 million for two more years. Thank you.
An old pro. Go ahead and lean into it a little bit, Eric.
It's always good to have a mentor. And, so, let me repeat that part. The formula was $6 million, capped at $6 million for two years, then $15 million for two years following that, and then $20 million in subsequent years. Legislature has since amended that language in the statute several times, but with no, that those changes have not resulted in a, in a different distribution. The distribution has, in fact, been $6 million for the first two years, and $15 million for fiscal year 2018. The legislature could continue to amend that in the future. Then, that appropriation is distributed to cities and counties using a formula that distributes... distributes 3.15 million to cities that have no ban on marijuana sales, and that distribution is based on the city's population. And then, there's another chunk of that money, 4.5 million, that's distributed to cities and unincorporated county areas based on the sales that generate tax revenue in those areas. And then, the remainder is distributed to counties. This chart shows the distribution to some of the cities that neighbor Federal Way. Things to notice about this chart is that it shows a trend of increasing distributions each year, and those read across from left to right. And then, you can also notice from this chart that the distributions are roughly proportional to the number of licenses. And I want to point out that the, the information in the far right column on the number of licenses, that is based on a document that I obtained from the Liquor and Cannabis Board in 2016, and those numbers may have changed slightly between 2016 and now, but I was able to confirm with them that the number for Federal Way is currently at four licenses that are allotted to Federal Way. That means that if there was no ban, there could potentially be up to four marijuana retail businesses licensed in Federal Way. Now, in 2015, the city enacted an ordinance to prohibit marijuana businesses within any zone in the city of Federal Way. At that time, the city requested an advisory vote, and in that election, 62% of Federal Way residents voted no on the proposition to allow marijuana businesses. The mayor opposes lifting the prohibition on marijuana businesses, and the mayor is in the process of developing a balanced budget that does not rely on marijuana excise tax revenue. And now, I will yield the floor for any questions, comments, or discussion.
Okay. I've got the Chair of the FedRec Committee, Councilmember Dina Duclair, do you have a comment, or would you like to start the discussion?
Well, you know, we're having a meeting Monday night to brainstorm, and I've told people to come with their minds wide open and to throw all sorts of things on the table, and I don't think we should eliminate marijuana at this point in time. And if we vote now and say no, then we take that off the table. You know, there are feelings on both sides. Some support it and some don't, but I, we need revenue. You know that. We're losing staff, and we'll lose more. We don't, we don't have enough money for the next year even. So, we need to be looking at revenue for this city. We can't cut our way out of everything, and we can't, you know, we got this stupid lawsuit going on too with Lake Haven, which is costing money. So, I think we need to really look at all sorts of things, and, you know, I just, I, at this point in time, I would hate to see it killed. We don't have to, you know, let's, let's look at it, let's talk about it. And, you know, it, what is, Ade, you, you came up with some figures. It might generate between 250,000 to 500,000 for the city. And, and that's a hefty sum, you know? And right now, that's going up to King County because people from here are going up, and just right across the border, right, right across the border on the north, north end up here, they're buying it up there, and we're losing that. So, and, you know, I remember about three years ago, when this discussion came up, there was also a discussion of the grocery stores selling liquor, and a lot of people were opposed to that. Grocery stores are selling liquor. You can buy it anyplace in there. And they had some problems at first, but they fixed it themselves. And, you know, we might have a few problems at first, but we've got the cities, we've got Kent that has it, we have Auburn that has it, Puyallup, just, just these, the women that came to visit with me, and they're not having any problems with the sales. They're, they're reaping money in for their city. And so, I just, I would like us to be able to keep it on the table for a while, and especially take it to the, you know, this special committee that we're having meetings to really look at potential sources of revenue. I mean, the craziest sources that we can think of perhaps, but some, something out of that pot might come in. We need more revenue. That's, that's, that's it.
So to speak.
So to speak, yeah. So, I'm, you know, I'm not saying it's going to be marijuana, but I don't want to take it off the table right now. I'd like to...
And there is, I don't think, there's nothing, there's, I don't think there's a motion before us right now.
No, I don't want a motion. I just want to say, let's just keep it out there. Let's keep an open mind on it, and let's put it in as a part of, in the, in the pot, so to speak.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I know, that's just a play on words.
I have nothing to do with it.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so, let's go, it's going to be this order...
It's going to be 10 o'clock.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Actually, I got a note about that. Deputy Mayor Honda, could you please make a motion?
I'd like to move to extend the meeting past 10:00 p.m. tonight.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to extend the meeting past 10:00 p.m., our normal, what our rules say we should end at. I think it's more aspirational.
We should change that one day.
It's aspirational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We can keep going. It's going to go in this order, right on, in the same order. Councilmember Sepha Dawson, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Tran, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you. I do have a question on the slide before this one. So, can you tell me what the difference is between the 3.15, 3.15 million to cities with no ban? I get it, but then, the bottom of 4.5 million to cities and an incorporated area? So, can you, what are the cities in the bottom slide?
So, in the, the, the 4.5 million slice of the distribution goes to any city or any county with an unincorporated area where they are actually making marijuana sales that generate tax revenue.
So, so what are those cities?
Say that again?
Who are those? What cities are those then, that are included in the 4.5?
It is any city that has a retail establishment that is selling marijuana, which is most cities in the state.
And the 3.1...
I think I understand your question. They're the same cities. So, there's two pots of money that are distributed. One is based on population, and one is based on how much they sell.
Right. Most cities are getting pieces out of both those distributions.
Okay. Thank you. So, the, the following slide where it talks about the distributions on all the licenses. So, for instance, Auburn has four stores or allotted for, they brought in 182, and then, you go to Des Moines with two at 90,000. And the assumption is that some of our people are going to these cities or areas, including, you know, Pierce County, to, to get, to purchase marijuana. So, I think my comment is, this may not be a true prediction of what Federal Way could be earning because if we have it in Federal Way, Auburn would lose some of those, their customers, Des Moines. So, what I'm trying to say is, that, that number may not be a true projection of what Federal Way could be getting because of how it's, it's situated. That being said, though, I personally, I'm conflicted because I know how I voted in the past. I know how I feel about this issue. That does not change. However, I've also, I've always believed that if, with new information and new direction, there's a possibility that I could revisit this. I like that we've, we've started having the conversation, especially now. But, what I would like to see, if we choose to go that route, is what I would like to see is that the funds be earmarked, either for human services such as youth type of education or youth-related stuff, homelessness, addressing anything that is human services And then, also, that the buffer does not change, that it remains, because there, we were in a workshop in, at the AWC conference, and there was a huge gap. You know, there's a thousand, 100 to 1,000, I believe, is what they, the buffer was. And so, my suggestion is that if we go that route, that it stays at 1,000 foot. And then, also, we, we've heard that the formula is changing. I don't know what that means, don't know what that's going to look like. So, all this distribution data and numbers could look entirely different in the future, which then means I don't think we can rely on that money. So, yeah, I think those are my, my, what I would like to see happen or address, but I'm glad we're going to continue with the conversation and see where it goes in terms of how we, we move forward with this. So, thank you for the time.
All right. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Eric and Ryan, for starting the initial conversation. One of the things, I think tonight, we heard both sides of the spectrum on the issue, and, and I wasn't around on the council when the first vote was made by the public, but I do, do think there would be benefit in at least trying to seek public engagement in some way before we do revisit it. I also think, you know, King County Council is going to be putting a pot store between the gas station on 320th and the freeway. That's already going to happen. And so, we're being, and I did ask for a reason why the council wasn't involved in that, sent an email to the King County Council and never heard back. And so, we're going to face this regardless. And so, I think that the conversation needs to be had, that if, if folks are going to impose this on us anyway, why don't we become a part of it in some way that's going to be financially sound for the city? So, I do, that's the point I want to make, and I do think there's going to be a broader discussion with the public on that before we make a vote.
Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To me, this has pros and cons. The pros is, the city may get additional money, maybe 200,000. That is the only pros that I can see. The cons that I can see is, this, these stores will bring additional crimes and problem into the city and therefore require additional police resources to address those issues. But, to me, is, the thing that make me feel uncomfortable and, and important is that if we are going to allow the sale of pots in our city, we basically go against the will of people. Less than two and a half years ago, the people in the city already said it very loudly, that 62% said, no, they don't want these. And for 200,000, we go against the will of people? I don't think that is a good idea. This city is not for sale. The fact that all the city around us do this doesn't mean we have to join them. We are better than this. So, for that, I would ask my fellow council members to reject this idea. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Mark Moore?
Well, how do I follow up with that? Well, first, I want to welcome Cliff. I know he's here. He's a potential business owner. I know we had an enlightening conversation, so I appreciate that. And I'll just start with the question and then kind of go into a comment here. Eric, and thank you for your presentation. I think if, if I, if I'm not mistaken, it's your first time presenting to council. Is that right?
It's nearly the first time.
Nearly?
Thank you for noticing.
So, right. So, it takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing. I know it's part of your job, but so, thank you for being up there and presenting on a, on a topic that could be controversial. So, it's my understanding that, let's say, Federal Way does this, is there a provision where the first year of operation, we wouldn't even get the sales tax or at all?
The distributions are based on the previous fiscal year sales.
Right. So, if we implemented, let's say, in a month or two, we're not going to see any benefit for at least a year, right? Well, we're not going to see benefit right away because we have not done anything previously.
That, that is my understanding...
Right.
...of the way the, the legislature has made the formula.
Okay. So, I think that's an interesting note for, for my colleagues, and perhaps they can be more clarity as time goes on for that, so we can fully understand what that means. You know, I honestly respect that we want to have a conversation and put everything on the table and see, see what options are there for finding additional revenue. I certainly understand that. We've been saying this for what, two years now? Three years? And so, just now, we're having those type of conversations, and that's good. And, and I would concur with what Councilmember Juan just said, Tran, excuse me. And so, I appreciate your comments there. And I, I think there is a lot that we have to look into. I respect the fact that we need to study this issue, but I do want to remind people that on Slide number five, if you can pull that up, Eric, next slide, the last bullet, it says that the mayor is in the process of developing a balanced budget that does not rely on marijuana excise tax revenue. And so, there is a lot of work that's being done behind the scenes where we can identify more revenues to come into Federal Way. And I think, depending on what those are, I think, I'm going to make a bet that that's a better and more long-term solution for a community. And so, I have a lot of concerns. I've met with some pot shop owners, and while it's a difficult conversation to have, sometimes it can kind of get a little bit exciting where threats can happen, and that's certainly not okay, but I think it's, it's important to continue to listen. And I think it's really important to, to remember that 61.7% of the public said no. And I think, right now, we're in a period of time where people's confidence in our city government is questionable. So, now, let's ignore the 61.7%. Let's ignore the 125,000 that we spent to take it out to the vote, and just bulldoze through that and make our own decision. And that's what I'm afraid we're going to, that, that's what I'm afraid is going to end up happening. And I don't know about my colleagues or not, but I certainly don't want to see pot money going back into the city of Federal Way. I don't want to see drug money. You know, if someone wants to have access to, to pot, sure, they can go to Auburn, they can go to other places, that's fine. Within the state, that's okay, you know? But I think we heard earlier that there are federal issues. The federal government has said this is illegal, you know? And I think, you know, as I'm getting ready to start a family, and I don't know about you guys, but I sure don't want to drive around Federal Way and start seeing plastered of, here, buy your marijuana pot here. Or, I don't want to go to my mailbox and see 50 pieces that say, hey, buy your pot here at all. That's not what I want to see. And for me, speaking to my colleagues, it's, I'm kind of frustrated because, you know, I, I respect the fact that we're talking about extra revenues and trying to find those, but there are other issues that need to be addressed, you know? Recently, the Washington Preservation Group named Camp Killworth as an endangered. That's what I wanted to talk about, but instead, we're talking about pot here, and that kind of frustrates me because, man, we hear all the negativity around our community. We hear about the drugs, we hear about the needles, we hear about the panhandling, we hear about all those things that I'm, I'm trying to fight to create an atmosphere where we're centered on Town Square Park. We're centered on bringing people together. We're centered on providing apprenticeship and opportunities for our working families. We're centered on youth opportunities. We all get police reports or updates... We all get police reports or updates, and a lot of the causes of, of crime is because of drugs, whatever it may be. And so, we ought to be part of a community that's focused on family values, that's focused on providing opportunities for families. And I'm, I'm trying to fight to make a better Fedway because I'm getting sick and tired of hearing people, "Oh, I'm going to move out." I'm getting frustrated with Fedway. And this pot, pot shops, four of them, we're going backwards, guys. And I think we're all working hard to provide opportunities. That's the path we need to be on. You know, and, and I know that this is a hot topic, and I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to constantly listen, but get, you know, respect needs to happen on both ends. And I know, and I'm thankful that I get that from my colleagues, and I'm thankful for the conversations that we're having. But from pot stop, from, but from pot shop owners coming into Fedway that don't even live in Fedway to threaten people, as this comes into a conversation and as we work on this issue, that's not okay. That's not okay. That's not how we do conversations in Fedway. We don't threaten people. And so, my point is that let's, for, and again, I'm thankful for my colleagues because we've had a great conversation, you know, but this issue can be such a controversial issue that we just need to continue to open up our ears, listen, and be respectful. And that's what I ask of the public, as we engage the public on this issue. And I thank Councilor Jesse Johnson for bringing up the idea of, let's bring it to the public, if that's the case. I think that's, 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 at the very least, that's what we owe to the public. Even though, we've already done that. They've already made their voice loud and clear. But, thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Copeng.
Yeah, I, obviously, this is an emotional issue for a lot of people, and I think that our rhetoric can get a little overheated in the process. I just want to speak to my fellow council members and say that I know that regardless of where you are on this issue, we're coming at from a place of trying to create the best solution for Fedway. I've, I've, I think we've seen the last three years that there are, there are some practices in place as far as controls from the state and best practices by the pot shop owners that they do have, they're running a responsible business. So I think some of the rhetoric around that, I question. I think that we build a strong man argument, and that just weakens the position that, of the person making that argument. The flip side of that, though, is, and the thing that I keep coming back to, is, the city of Fedway spoke so clearly. Whether, whether the opinion has shifted, it's got a long ways to shift before it actually would change. And for us, as a, as a council that has been voted, I mean, I was elected in the same election cycle where this, this, this determination was made that 61.2 or 4% of the people of Fedway that voted didn't want that. And there's been arguments made that that's, that's, was a down year election, or it was a down turnout, low turnout. But it's still a statistical representation of where the people of Fedway were at that time. And again, I think if, if we are even going to consider this, I think we really do need to have a conversation with the people that it's just not more than, you know, people showing up at, as much as I appreciate people showing up here at City Hall and telling us, it's a, it's a small representation. I think that we would need to have this go back to the public and have the public give us, give us their opinion. And we spent $125,000 the last time we did it, it's probably going to cost as much or more. So I think if we really, we really want to hear from the, from the people of Fedway, we need to make a commitment to put this on a ballot and actually hear from them. So, that's where I stand.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So, in the next few months, leading up until perhaps the first meeting in December or the last meeting in November, when we vote on a budget, we're going to have a lot of difficult discussions as a council. I understand the mayor is working really hard to present to us a balanced budget, and I appreciate that, but we need to look long-term. You know, what, where is the city going to be in five years or in 10 years? What do we need to do as a council now to make sure that in five and 10 years, we still have a balanced budget? And I'm glad that this conversation tonight has been civil among the council members because I know we all have really strong opinions. If I could be the boss of the whole world, we wouldn't have cigarettes because they cause illness and death. We wouldn't have alcohol because that can cause illness and death. Marijuana, no. The stronger drugs that people are using out on the street, we wouldn't have that. But I'm not. And cigarettes and alcohol and marijuana are all addictive. And yet, they're, they're sold, they're legal in the state of Washington and they're sold. But as a nurse, I, I have a real problem with, with those substances because they are pretty bad for you, and they're bad for the people around you. But I, I can't stop that. It's, you know, we've had those substances around for a long time, and people do use them, and they, and they seem to enjoy them. As we go forward with our discussions in FedRAC and as a council on where we're going to find more revenue sources, this does deserve a discussion. There are cities that are bringing in some, some money for this. I agree with Councilmember Essefa Dawson that if we were to do this, I would like to see it going into human services, perhaps drug education, perhaps having a place in Fedway for those who are addicted to, to drugs or alcohol and who need treatment and they can't get it because there aren't enough beds in King County or Pierce County or the state of Washington for those who want treatment. But that is not here, that's not tonight. This is opening a discussion of what might be, what might not be. As, as a council, we're going to have to have really difficult discussions. We're going to include the public because this is your city. We are seven people who were elected to make decisions, but this is your city, and we listen to you, and we value your opinion. No matter who you talk to, everyone has a very strong opinion on pot stores. You either want them or you don't want them. There's really not a lot of people that are in the middle. I mean, you hate them or you love them. And we will find a, a way to find more revenue for the city so that Fedway continues to grow and prosper and be the city that we all want it to be and that the city that we know it will be. I think one of the worst things that happened when the state voted to legalize marijuana was at, what I've read in the newspaper over the last year or so, where students in our schools have been found to have pot in their backpacks or on their persons. And they were turned over to the school administrators for whatever, detention or whatever. I think we need to make it very clear in this city that you have to be 21, that you are not supposed to have pot on your person in our schools. We don't want drugs in our schools. They're there now. They were there before pot became legal in the state of Washington. And I would like to see some real education in our schools for the kids, and it needs to start young, that this isn't a good thing and you need to stay away from it. But saying that, I appreciate the discussion tonight. I think that the public deserves to listen to us, and they deserve to know that we're thinking of every possible way that we can get more revenue in this city. Some, some don't want this kind of revenue, and some do. So, you know, there, there just isn't a happy medium with this. But we will go forward, and we will find what we need to do to keep Fedway moving forward. And I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts. I think that they're all good thoughts, they all come from a really good place in all of you. And thank you very much.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Councilor Moore.
Thank you. Again, I just want to remind my colleagues that people did voice their opinions. 61.7% said no. So, if we're talking about wanting to get an opinion, they've already given it to us at the expense of $125,000. So, just wanted to put that out there once again, and I'll probably be saying it over and over and over as months go on. But again, I do, I will listen, and I do look forward to conversing on this topic and, and more importantly, also looking at other revenue sources that, that could be on the table. Eric, I just wanted to, once again, just kind of ask, the, the slide on revenues, so there's a potential for the city of Fedway to, because my conversation with the day was that there's a potential of getting perhaps about $250,000, but not more of, but not more. And we may not even get $250,000 because the reality is that, that's based on sales. Is that correct?
Part of the distribution is based on sales and part of it's based on population.
Right. So, if their sales aren't doing too well, you know, that we may not get that high of a revenue into, at the end of the year. Is that correct? Is that a fair assessment or thought?
That is correct. Because, keep in mind, we have in Pierce County at the border, which is going to the Pierce County. So, whatever sales will come from the sale, I, I, I mean, yes, there's a good likelihood that we will not make it, yes.
Okay. So, I just want us to keep that an option. And this is, I mean, my colleagues are right, this is, if I'm not mistaken, and that's, this is difficult because we don't have exact, and it's hard, but we don't have good figures at all. And so, that's what makes it so hard because it's just hearsay stuff. But that's, that was one of the conclusions I was kind of coming up with, is that, sure, we could get $250,000, but that's based on sales and how well they do.
Councilmember Moore, just to be clear, based on what was said, they give you, they allocate revenue based on the last year's sale. So even if the council were to do anything today, we're not going to see any money until next year.
And if...
Because it's based on prior year.
Yeah. And that was my question earlier, and I appreciate you clarifying that point. So, thank you for doing that.
Councilor Duclair, did you have a comment? All right. Okay. I think everybody's, oh, there you go. Okay. Councilor Tran, yes, of course.
Sorry. There, there was one more thing that I neglected to mention earlier, and that is, there, there is possibility that some other businesses in the city will pack up and leave. And that will, you know, impact our ability to collect those taxes. The other, the other thing is more personal, that, for me, and I only speak for me, there is a moral question that I have to struggle with. I have three children, adult children. How am I going to explain this to them when they come to me and say, "Dad, why did you do it? Why you allowed this to happen?" I'm going to be, really have a tough time to explain it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Moore.
Yeah. This is my last comment.
Promise?
I do. I do promise, yeah.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding, Mark.
Thank you for holding me accountable.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to lighten it.
You know, thank you. And I think, Councilmember Tran, that's a really good point. And I do, you know, having met with some of the pot shop owners, I know that they try to do the right thing and, and be responsible business owners. As much as I may disagree, you know, I have to recognize that. But, you know, right now, we have a, we have one business owner that's in the audience right now, where he has been heavily impacted by heroin injections, by needles, by shooting up. And I understand, we're not talking about heroin injections, but it's just like, you know, this could potentially, and a lot of businesses around him have moved. He's the only one there. And so, one has to ask, and we don't know if this would happen or not, but should there be a pot store? Maybe I'm wrong. Is, what's the cause going to be with businesses that are surrounding that store? And that's just a thought that kind of keeps walking through my head, and I worry about that quite a bit because, you know, we have a business owner that's been tenacious, that's been relentless, that's been working, cooperating with the city of Fedway, that what, now we're going to put a pot store right next to him? That, it's just, it's just a thought that kind of comes through my mind.
Councilor Duclair.
Okay. You know, this is a discussion we're having. I'm not saying we should go into it. There's, there's, okay, there's a question there, but let's look at other cities and talk to them. What have their businesses done? Have they had problems with it? I'm not asking us to jump in right now, but I'm asking if we're going to, if we're interested at all, let's talk to the other cities. Let's talk to their businesses. Were they impacted negatively or were they impacted positively, or did it not impact them at all? You know, I mean, you're throwing out a hypothetical, and I don't want to make a decision on hypothetical. I prefer, if the council is interested in getting more information, that's all that I was trying to find out tonight. If you're not interested in doing this at all, then there's no sense talking about it anymore. But if you're really interested, then we could get information, more detailed information from the cities that have had this and find out, has it caused more crime? Has it caused them to have more police calls and stuff or not? Let's, you know, let's base things on fact instead of hypotheses that we have not proven. That's all I'm saying. So, if we're interested in doing it, then we should do that. If we're not interested in doing it, then finally, the committee won't even consider it in our discussion.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. At AWC, three of us attended a session on pot stores. And the mayor of Buckley was speaking, and they do have a pot store in their small town. And she, she was asked if it had had a negative impact on her city, and she said, "No." So, maybe some cities have, maybe some haven't, but I do want factual information. I don't want hearsay stuff, you know, that, because that's not how we make decisions on a normal basis. So, you know, let's get the information that, and make a decision based on fact. And as Councilmember Duclair said, this is, just to see if we're going to continue discussing it, there seems to be a, that, yes, we want to continue discussing it in the FedRAC committee and get some more information.
Okay. Councilmember Essefa Dawson.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And to add to what Deputy Mayor Honda said, one of the other things that was brought up that also impacts the equation is that the tribal communities are going to start selling, which then undercuts the tax revenue. So, that's also a factor that we need to bring up. And tonight's discussion is only for discussion, so I'm glad we're all able to say what we think, but I really think the discussion has to continue at some point, whether or not we do it. Because once we decide which direction we're going, we are, all, we're well-informed, and we're coming from a place of understanding, knowing facts and data. And then, that way, then, we can communicate to the public, and, and public engagement is very important, we've all said it, so I'd like to see that. But it's, at the end of the day, we're all informed, and our decision is based on facts and information rather than how we feel. I, I know how I feel about it, but at the end of the day, again, you know, we need to have the public speak and data direct where we're going.
May I just add one thing to that? We did have a public vote the last time. It was an advisory vote, which meant that the council did not have to go with what the citizens said. I just want you to know that.
Yep.
For those of you that weren't here.
All right. Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Moore, did you want to go again?
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Johnson.
We're talking about drugs here.
We're talking about accountability.
Just, just very briefly, I think also, just to touch point on what everyone said, like, we have to also be a louder voice regionally, too, because, like I said, King County Council's having a pot store come into our community, unincorporating King County, but basically Fedway. It's right there, a block away from the Washington Education Association, or actually across the street. So, we can actually start tracking what's going to happen once that's built because it's already coming. And so, we need to have a louder voice regionally if this is the way we want to go outside of this vote, so. if this is the way we want to go outside of this vote, so, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Pete Von...
Oh, Councilmember Moore, please, yes.
I mean, we're talking about a massive issue, you know, and it merits conversations, and so I appreciate my colleagues indulging me here, you know, certainly I appreciate and respect the whole facts and whatnot, but, and certainly, sure, you know, I look forward to talking to other cities, and other police departments, and whatnot, but that's their experience, guys, it could be a different experience for us, so just because we hear it here, doesn't mean that's exactly what it's gonna be here, and let's use that as data, you know, and so I think that's something that we need to keep in, in mind, because everybody has different experiences, and again, so that's that, and, and Councilmember Johnson, I do appreciate you actually taking the time to write to, to King County, I, I hope it's King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbar, because I've been meaning to do that, and, and I've not, and I would like to know, why in the world is there a pot shop going right outside the limits of Fedaway? And I would call on the council member to actually respond to you and give us an answer, because that disappoints me, because as much as I respect our council member, where is he? Because last time I checked it, there is section eight housing going right outside the doors of Fedaway, and all those two things are gonna impact our community, you know, and, and I think Councilmember Von Reichbar needs to be held accountable, and needs to actually respond to the elected officials that are corresponding with him, and that's a concern, so I'm glad you brought that up, but I do look forward to the conversation in the next several months, thank you.
Councilor Trent.
Sorry, gotta say something else. I, I do respect that we need facts and data, and the daily work that I do, I operate in facts and data, but here's what we ignore, facts and data, two and a half years ago, 62% of voters already said no, how much facts and data do we need? I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I think we, the discussion will continue, the important work will continue in Federak, and we'll just take it from there, great discussion, everybody, and, and I think it was a very civil discussion, so thank you. All right, let's start with council comments, Councilmember Sephardoson.
I don't have much to say, but what I want to say is, at the conference, to change the subject, there were a lot of really interesting and fascinating topics, I wish we could all go to, you know, we, we had gone to all of them, but we couldn't, but what it made me think about as we, as we were going from session to session is, Fedaway centered on opportunity, so what are we gonna do for our community, for Fedaway, to take our tagline to really make it a city that is centered on opportunity? And so there were a lot of things that were discussed, and, and I'm sure we'd all like to share that with, with, with the rest of you, but they also had a beautiful street fair that we went to, and I, and I thought it was really fun, the community was there, people were just enjoying themselves, we need something like that in our community, where it brings people together, just for the fun of coming together, and so I think that would be fabulous for our city to, to maybe explore, look at. I just want to thank you, Mark Copeng, tonight for, and, and most of the nights, actually, for just trying to unify our conversations, reiterate what's being said for the most part, and just being a voice of reason, and a lot of the conversations that we have, I just want to publicly thank you, and I do appreciate that about you. Thank you, and good night. Oh, happy July 4th, I forgot.
Here, here, it's almost here.
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so today marks exactly six months since Councilmember Trent and I have been in office, and so, I do have a very brief memo for the citizens, I know we want to get to our festivities, 4th of July, and it's getting late, so, we live in a time in our city's history where every decision we make is being deeply analyzed, sharply challenged, and profoundly reviewed, as it should be, and we all welcome feedback here in the council, and I think that we must adjust and look at every expenditure through a fine tooth comb, which we are. A couple of months ago, we came together and we decided that our top priorities as a council would be sustainable revenue streams, economic development, reducing homelessness in a comprehensive way, all the while being inclusive and responsive to our community, and we have done some of those things, we have asked the mayor to implement a zero-based budget for our budget cycle this year, we have scheduled strategic meetings on revenue ideas, thank you, Councilmember Duclair, we have hosted meetings and forums in the community to engage the public and gather feedback, we have also started working towards real solutions to our budget shortfall, but I do realize we have a ways to go, our very success as a city depends on our ability to visualize where we want to be, as we've said, five, seven, 10 years from now, to adjust to new ideas, to remain vigilant, and to face the challenge of change. It is our paramount duty to creatively respond to the challenges that we have ahead, and that we are confronted with, in a way that is not arbitrary, but truly listens to community and makes informed decisions. Most times, there is no deficit in human resources, but the deficit is in human will to change. Let's work even harder to creatively partner with our residents, educate the public, and engage the public, and actually listen to help make our city better in a long-term strategic way. I hope our budget can reflect that in November, thank you.
Thank you, well said. Councilmember Trent.
Just so you know, Councilmember Johnson is my spokesperson.
What'd he say?
I just want to take this opportunity to wish the mayor, deputy mayor, fellow council members, city staff, and the resident of the city safe, and happy 4th of July, happy birthday, America.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Here, here. Councilman Copeng.
Well, I tell you, I appreciate our colleague, my colleagues, and the conversation, the conversations that we've had tonight, we've covered some difficult subjects, and we've done it, and, in a, in a good spirit, and I thank, thank them for that. I, you know, the last few weeks, I think, have been marked by a few things, one of them, which is always exciting to me, is, is a new, new opening, and we, the, Council, Deputy Mayor Honda and I got to be a part of a, and, actually, Councilmember Sephardoson, you made it too, didn't you, the Pecos bills, groundbreaking at, over by Walmart, yeah, the, the big Walmart, down by Costco, again, it's, what an optimistic thing to open a business, to believe in the future enough that, you know, you're gonna put your livelihood on the line, and put your capital on the line to, to create a new future, and I really appreciate their, their enthusiasm for Federway, and their belief that they can launch a new business model in Federway successfully, and with plans of duplicating it elsewhere in the country. I, along with Deputy Mayor Honda, and Councilmember Sephardoson, and Councilmember Moore, went to the AWC, the Association of Washington Cities Conference over in Yakima, and found it to be very informative, and I think it's a good, a good resource for us as a council as we continue to, to get the bigger picture on the issues that we face as a city, and a state, and, and a region, and again, I, that, it's always good to spend some time just really learning more about the successes that are, are being created in other cities, and some of the challenges they're facing, and very similar in, in some respects to what we're facing, but again, just a great resource, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity that, that we had to go, and I think the last, the last thing I want to talk about was Special Olympics, and we have such a great opportunity, I think, as a city, to appreciate some very special athletes, both at the Aquatic Center and at Celebration Park, and I just hope that, you know, one of the things that we didn't talk about, and it's the amazing Parks Department, they are gonna turn around, basically, after a fireworks show, and completely tear down what's there, and prepare, prepare the grounds for softball the next day, so again, it's like, the, the commitment that they demonstrate to really make things happen around special events, and it just really speaks to their dedication as a team, but again, we have an opportunity to really appreciate some very special athletes in Federway, and I hope that you will take some time to get to the Aquatic Center, and get to Celebration Park, to enjoy this, both the softball and the swimming events, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, I also want to echo the words of my colleagues, I appreciate the conversation that we had on this prospect of an idea, of trying to find revenues, I think it's gonna be a hard conversation, because there is a lot of heart that goes into those words, that come out of each other's mouths, and there's passion behind it, and I know that, you know, we all care, and we're trying to do the right thing, so I look forward to the next coming months to, to, again, review other revenue sources as well, so, I also had the opportunity to attend the Association of Washington Cities Conference, it's my fifth time going, fourth time going, somewhere in there, I think, and I enjoy it, because I always walk away with something new that I've learned, and, and Councilmember Copeng and myself attended one of the workshops on, what do you do with empty buildings when they just keep sitting there for a long period of time? And thanks to the leadership of Councilman Copeng, he, ideas came to his, to both of us, and he shot off an email, and I know that it's gonna be a good item for discussion for another potential revenue sources, so I look forward to talking more about that, and hearing more about that next, next, I believe, next week. So, also, I had my lunch and listening series of events, and we had a small group come together, and again, the, the major topics that I've heard, that is no surprise to you guys, are homelessness, rent, low-income housing, drugs, property values being skyrocketed, kids, and giving them opportunities to teach them life skills, and also talked about economic development, and, and so, just, it was a good conversation, we also talked about, you know, youth involvement as well, I think that's popping up just about everywhere, and so it was a good session, I really enjoyed it, I will, I will be having more of my events, I will have one later this month, in August, we were gonna take a little break, and then come back to it in September, so, just keep your eyes on facebook.com/councilmembermartinmoore, and with that, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy 4th of July, as a person who was adopted and became a citizen of this country, I certainly am grateful to, to be able to live out the American dream, and have, and work hard for the opportunities that are given to all of us, so have a safe and wonderful 4th of July, thank you.
All right, Councilman Duclair.
Thank you very much. First of all, I will remind everybody that we are having that five o'clock meeting here Monday, in the Hallebusch Room, and if anybody has any ideas on revenue enhancement, please feel free to send me your ideas via, via the internet email, and nothing is too crazy, so whatever you have, you know, just send me something, and I'll bring it into the group, and that meeting will be at 5:00 PM. You know, I want to say something about our city, I moved here in 1990 to take a job in Seattle, and I lived in Renton for five years, and that was a horrible experience, Seattle, to be honest with you, I'd never seen, I'd never seen such an unfriendly city in my life as that was then, and I used to come down here, I lived in Renton, because when I, when I left Chicago, one of my board members told me that he was with Boeing, and he suggested Renton, but I used to come down here to the mall, because I thought it was better than South Center and any of the other stores, and I went through the city, and I liked the city, I loved the way it looked and everything, although I tell you, the first time I came down here, I, I rode around trying to find where City Center was, because I'm, I'm from New England, and you always have a church, and the town hall, and I didn't know where the town hall was at that time, it was over in a real estate business place or something, but I really, really loved it, and when I had the opportunity to come down here and take over the directorship of the multi-service center, the first thing I did was go to a local bank and say, I want to buy a house, will you give me a loan? Because I wanted to use the local banks, and, and, and I opened up bank accounts down here, and I became very, very involved, and I went through the whole process, you know, after a while, signing up for commissions, sitting on, and being appointed to different things, going through the, started with Parks and Recreation, because I didn't know a darn thing about Parks and Recreation, and went down to one place, and we, we almost lost one of the members, because he gets so stuck in the mud, we had to go pull him out and save him, but I learned a lot about that, and then I went on to different commissions, and then finally decided I wanted to run for office, I wanted to be up here with, with the big people, but this has been a very, very welcoming city, and I still think it's a welcoming city, and I don't ever want it to lose that, no matter what we do, I want us to always remember that Federway is an open city, a loving city, and a caring city, and even though we may have disagreements up here, and it sounds like we're, we're arguing and fighting, we're all sitting here because we really, really do care for this city, and we want to do the right thing about it, and for it, so, other than that, I want you all to have a safe and happy, peaceful 4th of July, remember, people at home, to keep your animals in the house, because this, the 4th of July, the night before, the day of, and the night after, is terrible, and the last time in my neighborhood, 10, from 10 to 12, constant, and then started again at 1:00 in the morning, and dogs especially, don't put them outside your house, please keep them in with you, because they need you to protect them, if they're outside, they will dig, they will get out of the fence, and you'll probably never see them again, so on that, let's all have a very happy, safe, and, and very, very nice 4th of July, thank you.
Well said, Danny. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you, we started our evening tonight at 5:30 with commission interviews, and we have more commission openings available, so if you're interested in serving on a city commission, and you live within the city limits of Federway, please look at the website and apply for those commissions, who knows, you could end up here, a lot of us were on commissions before we became council members, but, but please look, because we depend on the commissions to advise us and to help support the city and the city's functions. And, you know, tonight, we've been hearing a lot about programs for youth, and issues with our youth, and I am hoping that the mayor could help us get a list of all of the programs that the Boys and Girls Club have in Federway, the school district, and the multi-service center have for youth, because I underst, you know, we, we need to keep our youth busy, so that they're not getting in trouble, we need to try to keep our youth employed, if possible, so they can be making some money for the things that they need, but it's, it shouldn't be just up to us as, as a city to do that, we have partners outside of the city hall, and I, it would be very interesting to see what programs are being offered currently here in Federway for youth, and what we can build on from that, and if that's possible, Mayor Farrell, that can be done?
I'll, I'll have it looked into.
Awesome, thank you, and tomorrow, maybe? Betty Taylor talked about National Night Out, and it is true, we did apply for some funding from the city, and it was decided that we weren't going to get that funding, but it will go on, on the first Tuesday in August at Town Square Park, there are, our committee is small, and we would welcome people who'd like to help us, the Target Store is, once again, a partner, last year, they came in a week before the event, and with an offer to provide food and supplies, and they did, and they provided volunteers, and this year they're, they offered months ago to provide even more than they provided last year, so we're very thankful for that, we did have, on our first event, 300 people, and we do hope to have more people this year. We did have, on our first event, 300 people, and we do hope to have more people this year. It isn't, we weren't trying, and are not trying to take people out of their neighborhoods if their neighborhood is having a get-together. I know that not every neighborhood in Federal Way has a National Night Out get-together, and that's what a city, the citywide event was, is for. And so, um, it will go on. If you're interested in helping, please let us know, and, and we'll find a job for you, because there's a lot of work, of work to be done. There was something that was put out on social media that said some incorrect information earlier this week. And I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that the discussion tonight on marijuana stores was put on the agenda by the Federak Committee. And that's one way of getting things on agendas, that our council committees can vote to put something on the agenda. Last night, the LUTC voted to put an item on the agenda for the next council meeting. Um, it was not put on by myself, and I feel that we, having actual factual information is always important, so I wanted to clear that up. I did have an amazingly good time at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference this, this year. We were in Yakima. It's always interesting in, to meet with council members from other cities, especially the cities that are local to us, because some of the things that they're doing are things that perhaps we could do, and some of the things that we do are things that perhaps they can do. And the street fair that we went to was, was really fun. It was for all ages. And if you don't know Yakima, which I did not know Yakima until I got there, they have a craft beer industry. And so at the street fair, a lot of their craft beers were promoted, and their wines were promoted. But there were a lot of kids there, there are other things going on. So that's probably why they started that street fair, to promote those small industries that are taken off in Yakima. But I think it's something we can look at and do it in Federal Way. And it, it brought a lot of people, there were a lot of people there. And it's, it's every night, one week, every night in the summertime. So it's something to look at. I think it would be really fun to do. And the last thing I'd like to end with is, I appreciated the information tonight on fireworks, and I would implore you, if you're thinking of setting fireworks off in the city of Federal Way, to please think about safety, not only your safety, but the safety of the people around you. Because, um, injuries happen, houses burn down, and those things can't, you can't take that back once it happens. So please, it's against the law. It's not, um, it's something we do not promote in Federal Way. Please come to the Red, White &amp; Blues Festival. It's a fun time from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM tomorrow, and we'll see you there. Thank you very much for, for listening to our meeting tonight.
All right. With that, have a happy and safe Fourth of July. We are adjourned.